On the short-term rentals, if you would mind stepping out temporarily and you will definitely all be heard later. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I might add that the meeting is streaming live on Facebook.
Yeah, it's on live on Facebook and TVs downstairs, you know, so you can catch on. But I know these are two very important issues to you. We want to make sure that everybody has a great access and opportunity for input. Thank you. Okay, thank you all, folks. Okay, now, next phase, folks. If you're not a speaker, if you would mind stepping out, or at least in the back of the room, we have, before we can proceed, we have to comply. I know it's an inconvenience, I appreciate it. Okay, if we can clear the center aisle too, folks? How are we doing here? Okay, once again, we're going to be talking about the dome site project first and then we'll be getting later to the other one. Okay, at this time, we're going to call the meeting to order. And could we rise for the invocation Reverend Michelle Look from Pastor from Heritage United Methodist? Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, council members, concerned citizens, let us pray. Gracious Lord, we come before you to give you honor and praise. You are worthy of our praise. You are the source of all that is good. You are the source of all of our blessings. Thank you for every gift that we have been given. Thank you for our very being. As trusted servants, we meet this evening to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions that promote the common good. Thank you that you promise us that where two or three are gathered, you are there in our midst. Lord, we welcome you. We welcome you here this evening. We ask that you would open our ears so that we may hear your voice, open our minds so that we may receive your eternal wisdom, open our spirits that we may know your leading and guidance, and open our hearts so that we may receive your wonderful love. God, we ask that you would guide and direct our meeting so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Help us to accomplish our goals while displaying your character. May we be open to others' ideas and beliefs, respectful of our differences, not threatened by them. May we grow in understanding of our own motives, knowing that people often act out of their own fears. May we be a force for replacing fear with insight, helping us all to be patient and kind as we talk. Strength, real strength can always find compromise. Working together, may we find a common ground, enable us to move forward with a shared purpose. May we see what is truly important and unites us, focusing on that to banish roadblocks of ego and fear. May we be open to others' ideas and beliefs. Heavenly Father, we seek your blessings on our deliberations and on our efforts here tonight. We pray these things in your mighty name. Amen.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. May we do the roll call, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, all present, excluding Mr. Moss who is ill.
Vote is open.
We don't just...
Oh, don't vote on that? Okay. Just an announcement that Mr. Moss is absent tonight. He is still recuperating from pneumonia. He got home from the hospital. He is home, he is doing better, and may we all lift him in our thoughts and prayers. Okay, can I have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
So moved.
Second.
The vote is open.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have certified the closed session to be in accordance with the motion for recess.
May I have a motion to certify the informal and formal sessions of February 8th, 2019?
So moved. Second.
Vote is open.
By a vote of ten to zero, you've approved the minutes as submitted.
Okay, at this time, I have the privilege of a proclamation. Whereas the city of Virginia Beach adopted the Vibe Creative District Ordinance in April 2015 to encourage the growth of small locally-owned creative businesses and new public art by local artists. Whereas the naming of Virginia Beach First Arts District was created with the help of local business owner and interior designer Charles Powell, a founding member of the Friends of the Creative District Business Association Support Group. Whereas Vibe, which stands for Virginia Beach, is now the name of a nationwide renown having appeared in jeopardy in September of 2018. Whereas Virginia Beach citizens Charles Powell encouraged the early growth and organization of the Vibe Creative District, which has witnessed over thirty new business openings, significant private development, the addition of over a hundred works of art throughout the district, over two-hundred-and-fifty press mentions in the Virginia Beach arts community. Therefore, I, Robert M. Dyer, Mayor of Virginia Beach, do hereby proclaim Charles Powell, the Vibe District 2018 Volunteer of the Year. Ah, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Can we grab a photo with you, please?
Shameless photo op, huh?
The honor is really not mine, it belongs to a number of people. I was just kind of the first slamming his hand in the corridor to get it done.
Thank you very much. It's a great, it's a good thing, that's going to be of benefit to everybody in Virginia Beach and anybody who comes here. Thank you.
Okay, if you're here for Vibe, can you please run up really quickly? We have a group. Come quickly, please. Come on, Laura.
Come on, Vibe, folks.
It takes an army to build a creative community.
Ah, you better believe it. The whole audience was Vibe, oh.
Bill, they can't see you back there. Bill, come around.
Oh, thank you.
They can see you in the back.
Thank you again.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks, folks. It was lovely. Without the support of the council, this would never have happened. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. Now, we open a public hearing on lease of property, Farmers Market. First one, Building Three, Space Thirteen to S&amp;H Produce. Are there any speakers?
There are no speakers, sir.
Okay, part two, Building Seven, Space Five and Six, Holland Produce.
No speakers.
Nope, okay. Now, also, moving forward to city-owned property, Town Center Parking Franchise Valet Services.
I have one speaker, Reed Greenman.
Oh, okay. Welcome, Reed.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer. It's a pleasure to be able to say that, members of City Council, Mr. Hanson. I don't really like this notion that we're giving up public spaces down at the oceanfront for the use of a private company to take those public streets and then make us pay for parking. Part of the thing that was supposed to make Town Center work was free parking to encourage us locals to go down there. Personally, I detest valet parking with every fiber. I don't eat at Waterman's because they have valet parking, and I love Waterman's, right? So what I'm encouraging you to do is to think about this before you do that. These are public streets and parking available in Town Center, and the precedent now is that we pay for public parking, we build the streets, but now we have to pay to park in our own streets. I don't think that's really a wise decision, and I don't think that's what we want to do down at Town Center. I mean, that's why we had free parking. This valet parking feature that started with Rio Bravo and the rest of them and keeps continuing to expand through the Development Authority, which is a, as you all know, a non-elected body, a political subdivision created by the General Assembly. We elect you guys to represent us, and as our representatives, I implore you to vote no on expanding the use of city streets to turn them over to a private individual to profit from them. Meanwhile, the $25,000 that you're going to collect for year pales in comparison to the value of what you are, so maybe you could negotiate us a better deal. Mr. Nygaard, I know you're all about negotiating better deals. I get a little disturbed as I read these packages in the detail, and I don't see you guys fighting for us to get a better use. If you are going to turn over our public-private, our public property for someone else's use for profit, then get us a little better deal than that. Thank you.
Thank you, Reed. Any other speakers?
It's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Vice Mayor, the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move for approval on the consent agenda of the following items. Item J1, ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a lease of city-owned property for up to four years at Virginia Beach Farmers Market to A, S&amp;H Produce Incorporated at Building Three, Space Thirteen; B, Jesse B. Spry, trading as Holland Produce, at Building Seven, Spaces Five and Six. Item J4, resolution to provide City Council concurrence with the sheriff's recommendation to proceed with a comprehensive agreement with RNS Corporation, Ray Correctional Center Master Control Project. Item J5, resolution to authorize the mayor to execute a sixth amended charter agreement of the Hampton Roads Workforce Council, formerly known as Opportunity, Inc. of Hampton Roads, regarding workforce development. Item J6, resolution to authorize and direct the city manager to execute an amendment to the memorandum of agreement, Ray, continue the Hampton Roads Regional Water Quality Monitoring Program between the city and the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission. Item J7, ordinance to authorize a temporary encroachment into a portion of city property known as the canal within the Lagomar subdivision at 901 Varano Court, Ray, construct and maintain bulkhead, new pier, boathouse with boat lift, and timber wharf. Item Eight, ordinance to authorize a temporary encroachment into a portion of city property known as Harbor Canal at 2316 Spindrift Road, Ray, construct and maintain new bulkhead and mooring piles. Item Nine, ordinance to accept and appropriate A, $147,500 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management to the FY 2018-19 Emergency Management Operating Budget regarding the purchase of two antennas. Item Nine B, $386,250 from the Department of Justice to the FY 18-19 Virginia Beach City Public Schools Operating Budget regarding the purchase of school security equipment. Item Ten, ordinance to appropriate $16,151 to the FY 18-19 Emergency Medical Services Operating Budget and authorize grants to the rescue squads regarding reimbursed vehicle auction proceeds.
I open the hearing on planning.
Under planning, item K1, WPL Homes Incorporated, Joe Stollard, Wooling, Hodges, for a variance to Section 4.1, Paragraph MI of the subdivision regulations, re-subdivide property and create two lots at 524 25th Street in the Beach District. Item K2, Raw Enterprises Incorporated and Brian &amp; June Rail, Ruby T. Arminow, for a variance to Section 4.4, Paragraph B of the subdivision regulations regarding lot width at 1925 Gunbridge Road in the Prince Sand District. Item Three, Suburban Capital Incorporated, Hyatt Place Pembroke LLC, for a special exception for alternative compliance to the city zoning ordinance regarding freestanding sign and building sign at 281 Independence Boulevard in the Bayside District. Item Four, Glenn McDermott Town Center Jewel LLC, for a special exception for alternative compliance to the city zoning ordinance regarding a freestanding sign at 4452 Virginia Beach Boulevard in Lynnhaven District, noting that is a consent for deferral to February 5th, 2019. Item Six, Coastal Virginia Unitarian Universalist Unitarian Church of Norfolk for a modification of conditions regarding religious use at 809 South Military Highway in the Kempsville District. Item Eight, David Paul Aurelio for a conditional use permit regarding home occupation at 5720 Attica Avenue in the Bayside District. Item Nine, Six S Development LLC, RTR Real Estate Associates, Tidewater Investments LLC, and Bruce Ranomsky for a conditional use permit regarding automobile service station at 1910 and 1924 Kempsville Road and 1909 Centerville Turnpike, District One, Centerville. Item Ten, ordinance to amend Section 901 of the city zoning ordinance regarding use regulations in the B4K Business District. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
The vote is open.
By a vote of ten to zero, you've approved the consent agenda as read by the Vice Mayor.
Okay, now, we're going to move on to ordinances and resolutions. I wanted to remind everyone that the City Council Speaker Policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for ten minutes applies only to planning items and items where a public hearing is required by state law. As to all other items on the agenda, each speaker, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. Also, when speakers are called on each item, the clerk will call for those individuals who have signed up to speak. After those who have signed up to speak have spoken, the chair will ask, are there any other persons who wish to speak on the item at hand? Those speakers will be allowed to speak and will be asked to give their name, address, and phone number to the clerk of record. We have quite a few people here willing to speak, and we welcome your participation.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could we recognize the Boy Scout troop that's here?
We could do that under new business? Or do you want to do it now?
Stay this whole time?
Okay, now, good idea. Let's do it now.
Yes, I thought in the effort to clear some seats...
That'll be way past their bedtime.
Yes, it certainly will. So, Mr. Mayor, we have, Scoutmaster Wensel is here with Troop Number 362, and they're doing their merit badges for citizenship, so...
I tell you, the Boy Scouts here? Or did we ask them to leave? Oh, come on up! Hey, come on up, and one by one, say your name. There you go, you're first, there you go.
Cyrus Roberts.
Okay, and come on up and get a pin for us, an official pin from the city.
You can pull that down.
Pull that down a little bit, yeah.
Aiden Fleishman.
Okay, welcome.
Caleb Auberton.
Thank you, come on up.
Dominic Montoro.
Welcome.
Riley Copeland. Dylan Stoll.
Welcome.
Ahmad Kadri. Ian Poston.
You can raise it.
You can raise it.
I was always the tall guy in class myself, so... Okay, and the troop directors, too. You folks put in a tremendous amount of time and effort. Thank you. Oh, thank you.
Ken Dorhout.
Thank you. The future of America. Okay, we are ready to proceed. Okay, item J4, resolution to provide City Council... Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Resolution to approve non-binding term sheet... J2. Oh, my goodness, I'm sorry about that. Ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute the franchise agreement for use of portions of public right-of-way at Town Center for valet.
We have one speaker, Reed Greenman.
Okay. Welcome back, Reed.
Good evening, everyone. I see we have a lot of speakers, I don't want to take a lot of time. I've been here before with you. I think you delegate far too much of your responsibility to the city manager, and in addition to that, I've already stated my objections to the use of public-private property for that. In this case, what I really think you all should still do, and I didn't mention it last time, in the paperwork, in the details of this, it says that that agreement ends at midnight. If you are in fact going to vote yes for this, you probably ought to have it a little later since the places that you're going to do the valet parking for run a little later than midnight, so you might want to consider fixing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Reed.
It's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
Okay, the vote is open.
By a vote of eight to two, you've approved the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Now, the next item.
Thanks.
Resolution to approve a non-binding term sheet, request approval by the Virginia Beach Development Authority, and authorize the development of definitive project documents, or re the Dome Site project. First speaker, please.
First speaker is Mike Culpepper, and after Mr. Culpepper will be Russell Lyons.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, members of City Council. I am Mike Culpepper. I'm one of the managing principals of Venture Realty Group and Venture Waves LLC. As you know, we are seeking to develop the Dome project, a project some thirty years in the making. You've seen our vision for the project, you have seen a mixed-use development program that is a bold vision that reimagines what the oceanfront can be as a cultural and an economic hub. The project contains an innovative surf park, it contains a state-of-the-art music venue, and it includes the vision of Pharrell Williams. His commitment and contribution to this project and to many other initiatives is invaluable to this city. You have seen a plan of public investment. It demonstrates that there are revenues in excess of $8.1 million being generated from this project. This doesn't include the parking fees, lease revenue, and millions of dollars of indirect revenues. There are two main components to the plan of public finance. We are asking the city to, at first, fund the publicly-owned assets, which includes the parking, the streetscapes, and the venue, similar to other city investments. Secondly, we're asking the city to allow us to reinvest the revenues that we are creating from the project back into the project, and this will allow us to develop a lasting, environmentally resilient structure that allows us to secure attractions from world-class facilities. We emphasize that this project is not funded by the general fund. We are seeking revenues from the Tourism Investment Fund and portion of our project revenues themselves. In fact, the city estimates that this will generate sixty-five millions of dollars, excuse me, sixty-five millions of dollars to the general fund and forty-four million dollars to Virginia Beach Public Schools over twenty years. The same public schools that produced Pharrell, that produced our architect, our engineers, me, and lots of members of our project team, and lots of folks in this room here today. We are locals, and we know that there will be some here who object to this project. They will say that we have higher priorities as a city, and we say, yes, you're right. We absolutely have higher priorities as a city. The health and safety and welfare of our community is more important than any economic development initiative. We have critical needs, however, our ability to pay for these critical needs is predicated on our ability to invest in economic development today. We enjoy a favorable debt rating because of economic development, not in spite of it. Strong cities can invest in infrastructure and economic development at the same time. Let's be a strong city after thirty years, let's get a Dome Deal Done.
Thank you.
Russell Lyons, and after Mr. Lyons will be BJ Bowman.
Hey, Russell, how you doing?
Good, how are you? Again, my name is Russell Lyons, I'm the president of the Virginia Beach Hotel Association. I'm here to express our association's enthusiastic support for this proposed redevelopment of the Dome Site. After decades of sitting vacant, which is almost longer than I've been alive, it looks like we finally have a project that made it worth all the wait. The wave will be a transformational development right in the heart of the oceanfront, and will take Virginia Beach one very large step closer to being a year-round destination that our visitors and residents like and enjoy with their families. As well, our association views this project as an exemplary use of both the Tourism Investment Program funds as well as the Tourism Development Financing Program. The general fund will not incur any expense from this development, and in its first year alone, the project is estimated to produce $9.5 million of new direct taxes and fees that will go to worthy places like our school system. Finally, on behalf of the Hotel Association, I would like to compliment the team at Venture Realty on their incredible transparency to and inclusion of the public throughout this process. Every single one of our phone calls were answered, every email was diligently replied to, and every opinion, question, or concern we had as a group was thoughtfully considered and addressed. Ventures outreach to the public should be a model going forward to any company seeking a public-private partnership in Virginia Beach. Thank you.
Thank you.
BJ Bowman. And after Ms. Bowman will be Mark DeRoche.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, City Council members, city manager, and city staff, good evening. I'm BJ Bowman, Chair of the Resort Advisory Commission, better known as RAC. For those of you that are new to council, let me give you a little bit of background. This commission is a council-appointed body and is tasked with the review of any projects and issues associated with the resort community, and subsequently to make recommendations to council on these items. Commissioners represent a diverse range of stakeholders from the resort. They include the Virginia Beach Restaurant Association, the Virginia Beach Hotel Association, the Human Rights Commission, Civic League Representation, Retail Representation, members from the design community, and more. The Dome Project, along with the addition of the sports center and plans to revitalize Atlantic Avenue, will provide the demand generators to jumpstart the resort area. These current projects, in addition to an updated and prioritized race-up plan, will provide the cornerstone to transform our resort. The Dome Project is a key element in this transformation, and RAC has voted to support the project. Like Russell, I want to take a minute to take the opportunity to compliment Venture Realty and its principles for their transparency and inclusiveness through the process. They've reached out to everyone within the community, and they've responded accordingly with that. We're hopeful that after your vote tonight, RAC will continue to have an open dialogue with both Venture and city staff on this project and how it can provide growth opportunities for all areas of the resort. I cannot emphasize the importance of this project and of its magnitude and its role in the transformation of our resort community. We respectfully request that you vote in support of the project.
Thank you very much.
Mark DeRoche. And the next speaker will be Barrett Stork.
My name is Mark DeRoche. I am president of the Seventeenth Street Gateway Association.
My name is Mark DeRoche. I am president of the Seventeenth Street Gateway Association. Our association represents Seventeenth Street property owners, business owners, and local residents. The Seventeenth Street Gateway Association was formed to promote the redevelopment of the Seventeenth Street corridor. Since the dome was demolished in 1994, the Central Beach has regressed. It has become stagnant. Over the past twenty-five years, we have seen relatively little private development on Seventeenth Street and surrounding areas. Seventeenth Street currently suffers from blighted conditions. Our storm water and transportation infrastructure are decaying. Crime and violence incidents are major concerns of our area. As time marches on, the lack of an anchored development has taken its toll on the Central Beach area. Local businesses, owners, property owners, and area residents critically need the wave project to spark revitalization efforts. The increase in population density created by the wave project will positively impact the Central Beach economy for many years to come. We believe the wave project will be the primary catalyst for the much-needed redevelopment of the central resort area. We also believe this project will not only positively transform the oceanfront, but our city as well. The time is now for the development of this strategic resort area site. The Seventeenth Street Gateway Association strongly supports the city moving forward with the Venture Realty Group on this project and hopes that the city can quickly bring this project into existence. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Barrett Stork. Barrett Stork, and after Mr. Stork will be George Alcaraz.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, members of council, staff. My name is Barrett Stork. I have the honor of serving as the 2019 Chair of the Virginia Beach Division of the Chamber of Commerce. A major goal and focus of the chamber is to diversify and expand our regional economy. The proposed development of the dome site before you tonight will exceed this goal by producing a unique and one-of-a-kind, world-class surf park, music venue, retail, and office project that no other locality on the East Coast can match. The projected tax revenue and increased jobs from this project will diversify our regional economy and provide a draw for tourists nationally and internationally. The chamber commands the city for its efforts to diversify the economy and applauds the city for its transparency and openness with the public over the last several years in studying and evaluating proposals for this ten-acre site. There probably isn't another ten-acre site in the nation that has had the same level of studies, analysis, and man hours spent to come to this important decision point. The Virginia Beach Division strongly urges city council to approve the wave project tonight. Let's send a strong message that Virginia Beach is once again raising the bar for excellence. Thank you.
Thank you.
George Alcaraz. And after Mr. Alcaraz will be Billy Allman.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, city manager, Barry, staff. Thank you. My name's George Alcaraz. I've been a resident of Virginia Beach for the past fifty years. I'm here today to support the wave project and the entertainment venue. I am the general manager of the East Coast Surfing Championship, ECSC, the oldest surf contest in the nation, second in the world. I'm mentioning these points because the enormous multi-generational surfing culture we have here in Virginia Beach. The surf industry locally is thriving, and ECSC adds to that celebration by success of the international attendance with amateur and pro athletes coming to Virginia Beach, competing for sanctioning points for WSL, the World Surf League. These riders compete for points worldwide so they can qualify to compete in the final WSL Championships on the West Coast. As a matter of fact, 2018 ECSC winner is from Japan and will be in the first surfing event in the U.S. Olympics in 2020. Let me repeat that. Last year's ECSC winner is from Japan and will surf in the 2020 Olympics. This year, the Virginia Beach JC's will be hosting the 57th Annual ECSC and looking forward to many years to come. Several years ago, city staff had Continental Research complete an economic impact study for ECSC, and I'd like to quote a couple of the findings. Between fifteen million and twenty million was generated in local business revenues during ECSC. Nine hundred ninety-four thousand to one-point-three million was generated from tax revenues from ECSC guests. Twenty-eight states, foreign countries, had athletes participate in this event. So I mention these items about ECSC because our city is recognized as a surf cultural location, and this project will expand that cultural, or that culture, making Virginia Beach a surf destination for locals and visitors. The wave will provide a venue to teach our groms, our kids, in this controlled environment. Practice sessions for national and international riders, and of course, all of us, you guys and me, to ride that perfect wave. Please support this entertainment venue for our resort, our growing surf culture, and of course, those who want to try the sport. Please hear me that Virginia Beach has the potential to be in the epicenter of surf on the East Coast. Let's ride this perfect wave together and make Virginia Beach the sought-out destination of surf on the East Coast. Thank you.
Thank you.
Billy Allman. After Mr. Allman will be Tony Polino.
Welcome.
Good evening, Billy Allman. I'm just a kid from the North End. I've been surfing since 1960. My father was the general contractor on the dome in 1956. I was fortunate enough to see the debut of The Endless Summer and The Rolling Stones and got a technis shot in 1962 from the Ash Wednesday Storm. The dome is our community beacon and has always been that. But I go back to when Brad Van Domlen came, our Director of Convention and Visitors Bureau, and had the first tourism lunch, and he looked out across the leaders in the resort and said, what's authentic about Virginia Beach? Because authenticity is what's going to bring people here. We all looked at each other, and wasn't crabs or oysters or whatever. It's surfing, and it's music. Pharrell's got the music part covered. But this is about surfing, because surfing is a culture in Virginia Beach, oceanfront, that cannot be replicated anywhere else in the country. It runs very deep. As George said, it's a home of ECSC, the second-holdest continuously-running championship in the world. The tentacles of surfing in this community run very, very deep. Local families like Pete Smith, Bob Holland, Don Fentress, Dawson Taylor, Buddy Riggs, it runs across our community very deep. So this takes vision. So I ask you to look back at civic leaders in the past and the decisions that they made. Somebody made a decision to connect the eastern shore to the northern part of Virginia Beach with a seventeen-mile-long bridge tunnel. Somebody else decided to get Buckminster Fuller to design a geodesic dome as our first convention center. Somebody had the decision to merge the county and the city in 1965. Somebody even decided to extend Twenty-first and Twenty-second Street to downtown Norfolk and do an expressway. And some people sitting right up there had the vision and guts to extend a pipe ninety miles to Lake Gaston to bring water here so we could still be talking about a resort. So, right now, with your out-of-box vision, we have the opportunity to really bring something very special to this oceanfront. And so, again, representing the surfing community and just a kid from the North End, I ask you to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony Polino and Ken Hunt.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations to all those recently elected. My name is Tony Polino, and I am the owner of VB Surf Sessions, which operates a surf school and a surf shop. I also own a photo booth rental company and co-own Gringo's Taqueria, a restaurant on Norfolk Avenue. I've been treasurer of my condo association for seven years, and recently, the VBJC has elected me chairman of the East Coast Surfing Championships. I understand the positive impacts that this project will bring, but I also understand your fiduciary responsibilities to others. I'm also, I'm sure my colleagues will speak to the many benefits of the surf park, but I wanted to zoom out. Almost everyone I've polled likes the idea of the project, but the main opposition stems from their misunderstanding of how tax dollars are collected and allocated. While I share my peers' frustrations surrounding neighborhood flooding and truth and accounting's concern of unfunded pension and retiree healthcare benefits, I have full confidence that this new team will work together with the city manager and find solutions to these issues. I feel the denial of this term sheet will not solve them, but its approval today can help contribute to their solution. I've educated myself on how the tip fund works, and I believe in reinvesting tourism dollars into tourism growth while lifting the economy and creating jobs. The Tourism Economic Impact Study mathematically states that we will not be the city we are today without tourism. Staying attracted to tourists and not losing revenue to cities like Ocean City and Myrtle Beach actually helps these cities, helps this city's financial position in solving problems, including the ones previously stated. Surf park technology is here, and the cities will soon, and other cities will soon be on board to attract hundreds of thousands of overnight visitors, but Virginia Beach has the opportunity right now to be the leader and not a follower. I can't speak to the amount of revenue this music segment will take from Norfolk and Portsmouth, but I can state that VB will intake 100% of all surf park revenue within a 1,000 spherical mile. This has huge implications. The tip fund should be used for what it was designed to do and invest in tourism projects that will bring more revenue to our city, relieve taxpayer burden, create jobs, and help grow our economy. Venture's Dome Project does exactly that, exactly what council has been asking investors to do. As our fiduciaries, I hope you see the math and opportunity like we do, and I hope you see the positive impact this will be to our citizens and to our children. I urge you to vote yes on the proposed term sheet.
Thank you very much.
Ken Hunt. And after Mr. Hunt will be Ms. Rona Marsh.
Welcome.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, city council. My name's Ken Hunt. I grew up surfing in Virginia Beach, competing. I have spent my entire career in the surf industry, representing some iconic surf brands. I have had the good fortune of surfing many wave pools throughout the country, from Kelly Slater's Wave Pool in Lamora, California, to Typhoon Lagoon in Florida, and most recently, the Waco Surf Pool in Texas. While I was there, they conveyed to me that they were booked out for the next two months, and additionally, net of expenses, they added twelve to fourteen percent return on their investment. So clearly, a viable business model. But I think the economic impacts that will be seen from this pool will be far greater reaching than just some of our iconic surf shops, which are located in close proximity to the wave pool. But because it allows a safe and controlled environment, it really breaks down the barriers of entry and allows us kind of to grow the pool of people that can surf. I represent a surf camp that does, a camp for injured warriors. I'd like nothing better than to host my surf camp in a safe, controlled environment like the wave pool. Lastly, I just wanted to say too, in 2020 in Japan, for the very first time, surfing will be hosted in the Olympics in a surf pool. And I think it just once again reaffirms that this is not a fad, but the future. And I hope that we'll embrace it, and I hope you'll vote yes for the wave. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hi, Rona, welcome.
Rona Marsh. And after Mrs. Marsh will be Michelle Riley.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer and members of council. I would hope that we would all remember that we survived Hurricane Florence last September. Hurricane Florence devastated New Bern, which is 169 miles to the south of us. This particular picture of Baltic Avenue at Twenty-First was taken on May 17, 2018, two days after Mr. Jones and many of the council members here pushed through the CIP funding for the Sportsplex. The Sportsplex is going to be built in an area that has recurrent chronic flooding. I've had that confirmed by people in the stormwater department, because I've asked them, and they said, yes, it does flood. So you're going to build in an area that has chronic flooding. We also just sat through an hour presentation on the Dewberry Report. I sat there with you. I listened to Mr. Batten talk about this. We have $3.7 billion if we decide to take alternative number two to help ourselves with the citywide flooding. We have a shortage of money, we have a lot of flooding, and we have a lot of developer wants, and they don't all necessarily go together well. This might be a good project if you put it on higher ground in an area that didn't flood, but there are six major U.S. cities that could be underwater. NOAA put out a video on it, if anybody wants to look on YouTube, six major U.S. cities that could be underwater, and at two minutes in, it's Virginia Beach, and it shows most of the oceanfront underwater several feet. And I think it was Mr. Hanson, who's today, said that we can be looking at sea level rise to go up. They're trying to get their handle on this flooding issue that we're dealing with, but we only got the Dewberry study today. And to make this decision, to rush this decision again through, like you did last year with the Sportsplex, seems really ill-timed last year, as it was just a few weeks after it got put through that an entire forest was bulldozed down. I wish this council would slow down and think about things and not go headfirst. We only got the term sheet at the end of the last year, which was in December. So please, I'm asking you to defer. Look at how many bonds we're going to have to issue, because while we might not take money out of the general fund, no one has said what the bonds are that we're going to have to issue, and HB 2368 is already up in the legislative session, and they're going to issue bonds for this. Bonds are going to be issued. So anyone who thinks this is going to be free, we're going to be paying for this at least until 2039. So, I'm asking you to defer and to slow down this decision and to let us get a handle on what we're truly investing in, because nobody has said how much our bond debt is going to go down, and I don't think anyone on this panel of council people can stop Mother Nature.
Thank you.
Michelle Riley. And after Ms. Riley will be Ree, I'm sorry, Mary Lynn.
Welcome.
Thank you. I don't mean any disrespect, but did they legalize marijuana in Virginia Beach when nobody was looking? Because I'm starting to wonder about the sobriety of anybody that thinks that this is a good idea. We're about to be on the hook for $95 million worth of tax money. There's going to be 2,005 parking spaces and a 3,500-seat-capacity theater. Like, how does that math work out? When you're talking about 426 condos, what if everybody in those condos has two spaces? That's 800 spaces gone already before you ever even start putting people in a theater or a surf park or the fourteen restaurants or the experiential retail, whatever that means. Why are we leasing a 10.35-acre piece of property to these people for a dollar a year? I mean, I'm no economist or financial expert, but that seems like a pretty sweet deal to me. I don't want to ride the surf perfect wave. I just want to be able to keep my house and not lose it because I'm being taxed to death in this city. I love Virginia Beach. I think all of y'all probably do, too. But this is not, I think y'all just need to table this until we have all the details. Y'all just got all the details on this on January 4, and nine days later, y'all are going to vote on this? That just seems a little bit fast to me. I know that, you know, we have this rich surf community or whatever, but everybody in Virginia Beach is not a surfer. Who's going to surf at this wave park when it's 20 degrees outside? Nothing about this makes us an all-year-long destination. I just hope that you guys would maybe think about this a little bit more and table it till you have a little bit more information. Thank you.
Mary Lynn. And after Ms. Lynn will be Ree Greenman.
Welcome.
Hello. Okay, this is about five minutes. I'm going to put in three, okay? Has my time started?
Yes.
Okay. I feel very sad that a transparent, genuinely nice guy developer could stand to lose a lot of money on a deal they worked very hard on for two years to bring innovation, change, and something new to the beach to supplement our super-old, outdated ocean sneeze or whatever park that is. I'm out of breath again.
Take care. You're doing fine.
Virginia Beach needs, Virginia Beach needs need to be at least on a Schedule ASAP, with accountability to take care of 12-year flooding neglects and other priorities. It's sad we can't afford to even entertain a new idea proposal with warm, optimistic wishes for success and dutiful planning, sorry, for Mr. Culpepper, who is not Bruce Thompson, everybody. It's sad that because our elected officials and whoever else were not held accountable in public works, utilities, yada yada, that two years of someone's hard work and money may go to waste. We aren't really against revamping our aging oceanfront, are we? Fixing up old buildings and venues, parking solutions, new restaurants, shopping, grocery options? What we are against is not having answers to our questions or any idea of when things like flooding will be addressed. Please stop the flooding now. Our beach will be more rundown, if not a ghost town, if not a ghost town, a trashy destination one decade from now if we don't take care of our problems while simultaneously welcoming innovation and development. Before you cut me off, please defer this vote today. I don't think we're ready, and I don't have time to explain that. So whilst everyone voices their anger about this project, don't forget a family man was trying to spice up a rundown area, of course, to make a few bucks, but isn't that what we all want to do in America? I'm not fervently for or against this project, but I don't stand to lose two years of work, family, time, and investment into a deal that so many won't consider because the officials they elected over the past 20 years ran our infrastructure or drainage at least into the ground. So many people are so concerned with the 12-year problem that didn't just pop up with zero oversight, and so mad that how dare someone try to improve something other than a 12-year problem that we can't shut Virginia Beach down for until it's fixed. We need innovation. My friends and mother-in-law were grossly affected by Hurricane Matthew and other flooding. Her house is still down to the studs in a house I stand to inherit. I'm not making light of that. It ticks me off that I will have to still drive to Williamsburg or Busch Gardens, Water Country, because people didn't do their job for so long that we can't replace a shady amusement park and bring zest to our destination city. I'm sure some of y'all love Ocean Breeze. Many small towns would kill for it. What's wrong with improving our taste in development like we improve our taste in the opposite sex as we mature? I just want everyone to get along, not flood, and for people not to lose money who care about our city too. Welcome. It's good to see you again. Love ya, and go, Pat, go.
Thank you very much.
Have a great night, y'all.
Ree Greenman. And then after Mr. Greenman will be Joe Ballack.
Welcome back, Ree.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. Three minutes is inadequate to address this. I know you've got a lot of people here for support. I don't know if they actually read the term sheet. I don't know how much they talked to Mr. Culpepper, Mrs. McMillan, Donna. I did read the term sheet. It's another blank check. You guys need to do a better job. In fact, what's really interesting on your resolution, I downloaded off your website, under considerations, it says this arena term sheet is a non-binding agreement. Well, maybe you might want to edit that before you vote to pass this, since it's really the dome site you're voting on. In response to what Rona Marsh's comments were, it says in here, whereas the term sheet was provided to city council on January 4th, 2019. Mayor, you've been talking and you ran on improving the process of including the public on how we consider these things before we vote, giving us the information in time to digest it and bring that to you. I went to a briefing with Venture Realty at the Virginia Beach Taxpayer Alliance, of which I'm a member, and I'm also a board member of the Virginia Beach Tea Party. I asked a lot of questions. I got a lot of answers, and those answers told me this is a bad deal. Many people have already mentioned to you leasing this prime real estate for a dollar a year for 60. I mean, come on, you can do better than that. Then there's the whole issue of, is it really your job to build entertainment venues in the first place? Go read the city charter. I think not. But fixing flooding, yes. And I agree with Mary Lynn that we should be looking forward to things, except this particular item is the wrong time and the wrong project. It is a very nice project, but the private sector should be doing this, not you, and certainly not an all-appointed development authority, at which it says in here you're going to transfer ownership of our land, our 10.5 acres of public property, and you're going to give it to a non-elected body. Says it right here in your resolution and in the information you provided for the dome site agreement. I even object to the fact that we've got these funds coming in from the state, and the state people in Roanoke are going to be contributing to this project. Come on, guys. Really? Is this what we need to be doing with our time? And lastly, because I know I'm almost out of time, three people have asked you so far to defer. It's been a lobby fest up here so far with the people who've come in in favor of this. Defer. I don't see Mr. Moss here tonight. He could do a far better job than I can with my three minutes. Perhaps you should wait until he's here to vote on. What is the rush? Give us more time to take a look at this and give you better input. You got it nine days ago, the term sheet that the city manager is asking you to approve tonight. That is an inadequate process, Bobby. We can do better, and you said that we would. So please defer. Thank you.
I'm sorry. And then after Mr. Ballack will be Barbara Messner. Hey, Joe, how you doing?
Good evening, Mayor, council, city manager. Well, Ree stole some of my thunder. Again, everything I ever come to talk to you guys about, I always start with transparency. Ree touched just upon that right now. Some of you people on council had promised more transparency. Well, the transparency that I was told might happen would be, we would discuss an issue on one night, and maybe a week or two later, we would have you guys vote on it. Doing the vote and the talk on the same night as we've talked about over and over and over is not very comforting to the average taxpayer. It feels like the decision's already made, we get up here and we talk, we leave, you vote, and except in very small cases, that's been the case. The decision was already made before we ever talked about it. And it seems sad. So let me talk about this project, and a project that I, believe it or not, I support, okay? I support this project on the private side. I support Mr. Culpepper and all his efforts. He has been the most transparent, the most transparent developer or representative for the developer that we have had, that I can see, since I've been living here almost 30 years. He's come forth, he's called people, he's said, hey, let's talk, let's get together, let's get meetings together. He just had one with the Taxpayer Alliance on Saturday, and it was great. The bottom line of everything I'm going to say, or I'm going to be able to say in three minutes, is the success of this project is not predicated on the building of a music venue by the city. It's a wave park, okay? Waxing poetic, waxing nostalgic, I was going to say the waxing poetics, it was a band I just saw recently. Waxing nostalgic for a dome, okay, just because we had a dome there, is not a reason to build another music venue. It's not. You may think it's a great thing to have, and if it was, then why isn't the private sector building it themselves? You have a music mogul, not some novice, not some greenhorn. You have a music mogul that's involved in the park, in the wave park. Why isn't he building it? Is it not profitable? So are we going to be on the hook for some big risk? Everybody says it's tip money. It's our debt. That if there was enough money, if there were $200 million in the tip fund, I'd say, go for it, guys, it's tip money. But it's our debt in the meantime, and I want to make sure that everybody understands that although we're talking about tip money and all that good stuff, it's our debt that stands to be on the table tomorrow, the next day, and the next day.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Barbara Messner. After Ms. Messner will be Dwayne Appleton.
Welcome, Barbara.
I attended the event at the dome. I made these posters, 192 million new debt, just to fill hotel rooms. Y'all advertised that it's to fill hotel rooms. Bobby, you also said that y'all got over 100 letters, and you weren't sure if you got my letter on Alice Creek, so I think that's another reason to defer this vote. Did everyone get a copy of Beth Allen's letter? Did y'all get a copy of Beth Allen's letter? I'm going to, she emailed it to all of y'all, I'm going to make sure it's on the record. She also made this chart, which has been online, I'm sure y'all have seen it. This is strictly to fill hotel rooms year-round. It's federal education money, PPEA 2002, all of the lawyer lobbyists. It's also HUD money, mixed use. City used our tax dollars to purchase private property, remove it from the tax rolls, and then add it to the original dome site. Dome site was demolished in 1994. It is parking for locals, it's municipal parking lot. It's not a blank spot for y'all to build on. Then after buying up all the private land with their money, council quietly voted to transfer ownership of our land to the Development Authority in 2011 and 2013. It's illegal to lease our land for more than 20 years, and it's insane to do it for only a dollar a year. That's absolute insanity, since we have debt and we have people that don't even have their pensions paid for. Okay, I don't know if you can see this, but Will Sessoms resigned April 30th. His daughter's with Venture Realty. Kate Sessoms-Napolitano, she's the mortgage with marketing for Town Bank. Okay, Prescott Sherrod, this is Virginia Beach Development Authority, 2010. Town Bank Director, John Richardson. Doug Ellis, Venture Realty, Board of Town Bank, top shareholder, Town Bank. Luke Hillier, owner of ADS, settled.
Thank you very much, Barbara.
Okay, and he's tied to Ron Villanueva.
Dwayne Appleton. And after Mr. Appleton will be Arnett Spikes.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Dwayne Appleton, proud owner of a vibe district restaurant called Java Serve with my wife. Tonight, I am here to represent the Virginia Beach Restaurant Association as a board member. I would like to share with you our letter of support for this project dated August 31st, 2018. On August 21st, 2018, the Virginia Beach Restaurant Association Board of Directors received a presentation by Venture Realty of the proposed dome site project. The board voted unanimously in support of the proposed project. We would like to applaud the developers' willingness to engage the community as a whole, and especially their transparency in the development of the site. Additionally, the VBR Board of Directors wanted to convey the comments which were provided to the developer at the meeting. The VBR is excited with the amount of visitor generators that are included in the project at the surf park, live entertainment venue, and experiential retail such as National Geographic. We were briefed on the port-in-place parking garage with integrated parking versus a pre-cast garage, including the related increase in cost and the need to support the experiential retail above, which require large open spaces. We support the integrated parking model. It is our opinion that this project should be completed concurrently with the revitalization of Atlantic Avenue, and sincerely believe that the building of the sports center, the dome site project, and Atlantic Avenue improvements will provide the momentum to change the entire face of the oceanfront. Upon review of the displacement study completed by Lambert, we noted that they used the assumption of 100% capacity for existing restaurants. It is our understanding this was due to lack of available data on the restaurant industry in Virginia Beach. We do not agree that this is a realistic number, 100% capacity. While local visitors have not been included in the demand numbers, it is our belief that even if they are added, it would not justify the square footage proposed for this project. We completely understand that food and beverage outlets are an important and integral part of the project, and we do absolutely support that. That said, the square footage indicated in the feasibility study appears aggressive and would eliminate any desire of our industry to support any potential future public-private projects that include restaurants. There is a strong belief by the members that we demand generated by this project should not only support the restaurants located physically in the project, but should let the existing businesses in the surrounding area prosper and not suffer by subsidized competition. The resulting tax revenues would be the same for the city, whether it is generated by new or existing restaurants. We support a focus of shoulder and off-season programming for all aspects of the project.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Again, the VBR is excited, supports the project.
Appreciate you coming.
Thank you, sir.
Arnett Spikes. And then after Mr., I'm sorry, and then Tommy Serja.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, how are you, city council members? I'm Arnett Spikes. I'm, I would like to speak on behalf of Generation P. Generation P is a nonprofit grassroots organization that was created to express our gratitude and appreciation for all Pharrell Williams does for our community. It's an organization that has a broad spectrum of individuals from the middle school age up to adults. Generation P is an organization that is based on four pillars that reflect Pharrell's belief and what he lives by: God, creativity, individuality, and inspiration. Pharrell is an amazing individual. He promised God that he would give back to his community. He's done that through his charitable foundation from one hand to the other. He's a mentor, a role model, but more importantly, he's one of us. He's a native of Virginia Beach. We support Pharrell in his endeavors.
Thank you.
Tommy Serja. And then Gerald Daniels.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome.
Members of city council. I'm speaking on behalf of Generation P as well, and as leaders of Virginia Beach, I'm sure you all are aware of the pressing problem of brain drain in our city. This epidemic is caused by talented young minds, artists, doctors, lawyers, musicians, et cetera, leaving our great city to find opportunity in other, much larger cities. Why Pharrell is such an important figure for us young citizens is that he came from this city, went on to earn his own independent success, and not only stayed true to his roots, but is trying to bring back opportunities for his fellow citizens back home. And as the first gentleman spoke to, it seems like all of their architects, designers are from this city, and Councilman Rouse, I'm sure that that message rings to your heart as well. When analyzing Pharrell, you see his core beliefs or pillars that make up his foundation as more than just an artist, but a person as well. Creativity, individuality, inspiration, and in my opinion, the most important, God first. When joining Generation P as a young person, I saw why it was so important to keep these core beliefs held close, because adolescents in our society need this message. I request that the city council choose to permit Pharrell to bring back these opportunities and allow Virginia Beach to embody his four pillars as well. Because when we become a city that promotes the message of creativity and individuality, when we become a city that tells youth to be inspired and freely promote their faith, we will become a city that keeps our future talent playing for the home team, as they know Virginia Beach is a city that recognizes, acknowledges, and cultivates their personal talent and abilities. There is no reason our lawyers and musicians should be heading off to Atlanta. There is no permissible reason to have our businesswoman heading off to Charlotte. We have the resources and opportunities in our city for them to find success, which is why I find it imperative, and why I also find it completely sober and completely imperative that city council allows inspirations like Pharrell to bring opportunities for us young people in this city to shine. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much for your time.
And after Mr. Daniels will be Ron Taylor.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. First, I want to congratulate all of our new members of council. I'm looking forward to an opportunity to work with you all and all the fine things you're going to do for our city. I stand before you today to spotlight the enormous amount of talent in our fine city in Virginia Beach. Generation P, our grassroots organization- Generation P, our grassroots organization, is building a platform to expose the talent that we have here in the city. We believe in our young people like Tommy that you just heard from. We believe our people can progress into true greatness like Pharrell Williams. Pharrell's talent was spotted fresh out of high school. That's Princess Anne High School. And now Pharrell has, has become a global entertainment, fashion, and culture icon. His vision and principled lifestyle has guided him on a journey of success. Guess what? There are other Pharrels in our city, Pharrels that we may not know yet, Tommies that we may not know yet. We have a fine example of what happens when young people discover their God-given talent, and there's an opportunity for them to expose their gifts. Generation P believes an opportunity we have to empower Pharrell Williams and promote his pillars of life is a great opportunity, an opportunity to promote all the fine, young, talented individuals in our city, an opportunity leading with God first, creativity, individuality, and inspiration, an opportunity to make Virginia Beach and its talented young people the best in the world. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron Taylor, and after Mr. Taylor will be Eric Martinez.
Hey, Ron, how you doing?
Excellent. Yourself? Mr. Mayor, city manager, and the rest of the city council, I greet you. First, I'd like to give you a part of something from Generation P. One of the things that, uh, Generation P is a grassroots effort to really push the talent in Virginia Beach and to expose it, and to give it a platform. Like Pharrell said, why do we have to go to Atlanta? Why do our young people at Salem High School, who's in the arts, have to go to Atlanta or Charlotte or California? Why can't we just do it here and keep our talent here, keep our revenue here, and, and our business opportunity? Generation P gives our young people a platform, an opportunity to grow and be nourished right here in the city of Virginia Beach. We have the opportunity to have Virginia Beach to be the cornerstone for young talent. We need to brace the opportunity, not move at a horse and buggy place, because somebody in some of the, other, the, uh, in the Todd Water area would move by us and surpass us.
Thank you, Ron.
And I thank you for the opportunity.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Eric Martinez, and then the next one will be Robert Waring.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. Uh, keep this short and sweet. Been here since 96, came here from California in the Navy. Spent about 10 years here in, in the military, and while I was here, stationed here, I was seeing a lot of the guys that I served with. When they got out, they left the area. Um, what I've noticed here recently, I became a real estate agent years back, I'm starting to see a transition of individuals sticking around, and that only continues if we keep pushing for economic development. I don't surf, never surfed, uh, love the water, but I live in Chick's Beach, don't live at the oceanfront, but I have a two, a couple little boys that I would love an opportunity for, like this, to exist, to bring them down here and actually make the beach a destination that it should be versus just going to the beach. I owned a business down here for, for several, down there at the beach for several years when we opened. There was a lot of excitement about what could happen, and this, this was back when the economy was first starting to turn, and they were talking about development, and we actually closed about three and a half years later when a guy was shot and killed right in front of my, my restaurant. So, um, I've, I've seen the shift on both ends and, and how the, the beach ebbs and flows, and I think that this is something that we can really anchor on and build upon and become the destination that this beach should be. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Robert Waring, and after Mr. Waring will be Wes Lane.
Congratulations to all of you on your election or reelection. My name is Robert Waring. I'm a small business owner, resident here for 30 years, and a real estate broker, so do many things about this project that are germane to my business. I have to say, I first came to the dome in 1974 as a freshman at Virginia Tech. Came down to the Virginia Beach for the first time and experienced the dome.
I think you made Aaron very happy with that.
Good. Yeah, we, we liked him too. You know, I have a really long history that goes back much further than, than the time that I've lived here, and I, I look at this project and I think, at last, after setting us a parking lot for 25 years, we have a worthy successor to the dome. The dome was near and dear to my heart. It was kind of one of those iconic pieces of Virginia Beach, and when I wasn't living here, I'd always think about it and gotta get back down there, go to a dome show. So, now we have that. The reality is, we live at the end of a cul-de-sac, and we're down here at the end, and it takes projects like this to get people to come down here. The oceanfront, you know, from a local's perspective, yeah, we tend to avoid it at high season. This is a project that would actually get me to get in my car and come down. Maybe I'd learn to surf even. Longtime sailor, never surfed, but this could change me. But I really think that this, this project could, uh, could provide great benefit. I understand a lot of the, the logic and the argument for sea level rise and the flooding and the issues that surround it and the need to address it. I believe in, from what I've read, that the way that monies will work, we'll still be able to pay attention to flooding issues. I've sold enough houses in Windsor Woods over the years to be acutely aware of the problems they have there. So, I, I think we can do both, but I think this project is needed, and I look forward to seeing it manifest. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Wes Lane, and after Mr. Lane will be Charles Powell.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer. Good evening, council. Good evening, Manager Hanson. My name's Wes Lane. I'm a lifelong resident of Virginia Beach, also a lifelong surfer. Having grown up here in Virginia Beach, uh, I think the one thing that we all know that we don't have the best conditions, uh, as a surfer. Uh, also been lucky enough to spend most of my life working in the surfing industry like Ken Hunt. I've been able to surf many of the world's best surf parks, wave pools, and I can tell you that in the last three to five years, technology on wave pools has increased dramatically. And the thing that makes this project so unique is that wave pool technology and wave parks now allow people who would never be able to learn how to surf can easily now enjoy the sport, young and old, all ages and sizes. The ability to replicate a perfect wave is truly unique, and it's now come into our lifetime. So, for the last 15 years, I've been director for Quicksilver Surf Camps here in Virginia Beach, and I've also had many surf camps up and down the East Coast, North Carolina and New England. I also work for Coastal Edge. But the thing that makes this wave park so unique is that now the demographics are able to enjoy something that was truly available to a select few, and I think this project being truly unique, uh, is gonna make it successful, beyond the fact that the team behind me is ready and very, very accomplished in making this thing happen. So, I urge you tonight to support the wave project at the dome site. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tim Worst, and after Mr. Worst will be Edward Walls.
I think when Wes Lane mentioned people of all sizes, he had me in, he had me in idea.
Welcome, Tim.
Nice to see you. Nice to see you in that chair, nice to see you, and nice to see you again, and great to see you. I missed your first night. My name's Tim Worst. I live in the Princess Anne District. About eight or nine months ago, and, and Mr. Culpepper can remind me, I met Mike Culpepper, and I thoroughly enjoyed hearing about the surf park. Um, and I have nothing but good things to say about him and have a ton of respect for him and his family, and I know that my brother would say the same thing. I think this wave park is a really cool idea, and I have one problem with it: the money. That money comes from our taxes. We have huge things to worry about other than a wave park, and it was mentioned by the gentleman that came up from the beach. All these folks are coming up from the beach. It was said that we have huge stormwater issues. That's a priority. We have crime. We don't have enough police officers. We don't pay our police officers enough, and they leave after two or three years. That's a huge problem. That's more important than a wave pool. So, I, I support the wave pool. I think it's a great idea if we don't have to give our own tax money. And this has been said a million times, if it is a can't-miss idea, then get those folks to get that private money in here and make it happen. I met Pharrell. I got to meet him last year during his concert. Great 15 seconds. Humble, humble, nice guy. So, I wish him the best, and I hope it comes here and comes to fruition, but I wanna see private money go into these things, not our tax dollars. The tip fund is broke. We don't have $7.5 million in there right now to help. We don't have $58 million in that tip fund to help right now. It's broke. We have 355 available apartments, condos, and houses in the zip code of 23451 right now. I don't think we need more condos than apartments. Today, we heard about the, uh, Dewberry Study. The Dewberry Study, we've been waiting for that like you wait for Jesus's resurrection. I couldn't wait for that thing to finally come. We are looking in the face of $1.7 billion, up to $3.7 billion to fix our flooding, our stormwater, and this coastal flooding. We've got a lot of important things to do other than a wave pool, and I think I speak for hundreds of thousands of people in Virginia Beach. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Tim.
Edward Walls. Edward Walls, yes, sir. Then after Mr. Walls will be Diana Howard.
Hello, good evening. Uh, my name's Edward Walls. I'm a Virginia Beach native from the Tarwood area, graduated class 2007. Spent some time in North Carolina, at North Carolina Central University in Durham for two years. Came back home, finished up, and got my degree from the Virginia Beach of Art, the Virginia Beach Art Institute. Born and raised, um, sorry, y'all, excuse me, a little bit nervous. But just to see what Pharrell wants to do in the city with this wave project is, um, a dream come true. Uh, I also have a twin brother. My brother and I actually wrote a project, um, about something similar to this dome project, in which we wanted to create a festival for, to solve, to be a resolution for all the crime that goes on in the city during College Beach Weekend. Every year in April, over 10,000s, 20,000s of college students come down here just to hang out on the oceanfront in places where they're not welcome. They're not old enough to get in these bars and clubs. The hotel people don't want them in these rooms. I feel like this would be a great resolution, and the College Beach Weekend, in my opinion, is on the same status level or has potential as Coachella if the city works together and we, uh, just all properly support it. Um, I feel like the Wave Center would be a great venue to host it every year. It'll bring, uh, plenty of tourist dollars, and also, I'm gonna end on this, if you look at the city of Virginia Beach, Norfolk, downtown Peninsula, and Todd Water Metropolitan Area, we are in the top 10 on a lot of different lists. Most recently, it was just revealed that Norfolk is the sixth most romantic city in the area. If this Virginia Beach wave project comes here, we'll become number one on everyone's list. Thank you.
Good stuff. Thank you.
Diana, Diana Howard, and after Ms. Howard be Marlena Castelluzzo.
Hi, Diana, how you doing?
Hi, how's everybody today? Okay, um, I know I said this at, um, open mic last time, but I don't think anybody's really against the actual wave pool and having the notoriety of Pharrell Williams to elevate the project and everything, or we do object to is subsidizing one venture developer over others. So, um, having said that, one of the things that we, we don't want to see is like this becoming another town center, cannibalizing all the revenue around the area and competing with other businesses. I know this is going to have shops and restaurants and stuff like that, and we have restaurants and shops up and down, you know, Atlantic Avenue and the oceanfront, and so the competition, we'd be subsidizing that with our tax dollars. And we're also going to buy the entertainment venue, right? They're building it, but we're buying it for 30,000, $30 million. Wish it was 30,000, $30 million, right? So, we're owning it, right? So, entertainment is not the job of city government. Your job is our infrastructure. That is what you're supposed to be taking care of, our infrastructure. And so, you know, Mike said at the VBDA meeting that they couldn't do this project if it wasn't for all of the incentives and subsidies that they're getting, you know, with the, the performance grants and the stabilization fund, being able to rent the, the, lease the place for a dollar a year, and the gap financing, et cetera, they wouldn't be able to fund this. So, I'm hoping that this is going to provide all of the revenue that you say it's going to provide, and it's going to put, you know, money into the schools and money into the general funds and money back in the TIF and stuff like that, but I urge you to put money into stormwater, if you like dedicate some of that money into that, 'cause that is what is really needed. And I remember, um, Mr. Williams said, Ron Williams anyway, he'd said something about it, um, doing something for stormwater. This project's gonna do something for stormwater, it's gonna help with that, but what it's really doing, it's going to recycle the stormwater, right, and use it, right? So, it's, it's not like helping other neighborhoods or anything like that, solving their stormwater problems, right? The other thing is that, uh, we're doing the parking garage, right? We're paying for that, and we're doing $30,000 of parking space, and Mike said that, um, the people in the condos are gonna be paying for those parking space. I doubt if they're gonna be paying $30,000 for it, but I don't understand why we have to, you know, pay for the parking garage, right? And I understand the condominiums, how come the VBDA and the city gets certain condominium units back to them? They're gonna be having a party or something, like, somebody's gonna be here over at the entertainment center and say, yay, we're gonna go on the taxpayer dime and party at the condo.
Marlena Castelluzzo.
Welcome, Marlena.
Mayor, council, my name is Marlena Castelluzzo, Chair of Virginia Beach Taxpayer Alliance. And before some of you zone out because you've labeled VTA as the no group, let's clarify a few facts. We support a level playing field for all businesses, a key component of the new mayor's campaign, a main philosophy of city council members Abbott and Moss, and hopefully our new council members Ross and Nygaard. We have staunchly opposed special interest receiving preferential treatment, the financial insider deals, especially the favoritism of certain oceanfront projects. We have challenged the lack of fiduciary responsibility demonstrated by Mr. Hanson and a number of council members. Those expectations represent not a moniker of a no organization, but one of responsible civic duty. Regarding the dome project, we find it unconscionable that the city would tell any developer, "Don't bother to offer a plan, we already have someone in mind." Picking winners and losers again for our special friend, it's unacceptable, Mr. Hanson. VBTA continues to have concerns regarding sea level rise and impact on not just this project, but potentially the entire area. Additionally, the financial details are concerning. Projected revenues for this city's ventures are historically off the mark. The city needs to learn from past mistakes of public-private partnerships which fell short of the intended revenues and required frequent injection of additional dollars. On a positive note, the project proposed is by a company that is not the usual Three Vampires, Bruce Thompson, Gold Key, or Motta Hoffler, or Breeden and Associates. We like that no one's asking to close off a major artery along the oceanfront so their valet parking attendants have spaces to turn around. Venture intends to use an independent traffic consultant, not the city's, a plus after the opinion from the city that closing Atlantic Avenue is not an issue. We're delighted Venture has presented directly to the stakeholders, Virginia Beach citizens and city- and citizen action groups, seeking input and amending the project based upon that input. The usual city staff orchestrated dog and pony shows with predetermined outcomes were avoided. This standard mayor should be for all public, this should be the standard for all public-private partnerships or any group presenting her major proposal. Venture has in fact met the spirit of the law, not just the letter of the law. There is no reason why economic development should be competing with capital improvements in priority infrastructure upgrades. Those revenue streams should be independent, and our costly economic development authority, we're half as skilled as Arlington, perhaps we wouldn't have the constant battle of past needs being unfulfilled versus new ventures. Though we can't wholly support this project, we thank the principals for demonstrating creativity, the willingness to engage knowledgeable citizen in open dialogue, the recognition of flood control and city safety, what unique characteristics for public-private partnerships, and we wish them luck.
Thank you very much.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have a motion?
I move that we accept the term sheet as presented.
Second.
Second. Okay, vote is open.
Discussion, discussion.
Oh, discussion, my apologies. Sorry about that, one little part. Oh, Lord. Okay, please, engage in discussion.
I'd just like to say that I appreciate everybody coming in. For those who are opposed to the project, we are listening to you. This is a term sheet that is non-binding, and this is the whole part of having this open discussion. People can come up here and express their ideas. So we'd love to hear more ideas on what you would like to see in a development agreement. Ultimately, that's gonna be the binding agreement that we're held to. But the fact that we're here today and we're discussing it, I think, is part of that transparency that we've all asked for.
To say that this project was not a discussion in my household would be probably the biggest lie I could tell up here. My husband and I have had such enormous discussion about what this project means for Virginia Beach, what it's gonna do to our community, how it affects people as far as Kempsville and Centerville. And it has given me a lot of pause. And I think last year when we met as a council and started discussing this, I had made a promise not only to the plethora of civic leagues and town halls I held last year during the budget cycle, but to this council that I'd keep an open mind throughout the entire process. And I have made a decision on how I want to vote tonight, but I wanted to stress that I really do like what this project is going to accomplish for the city, and I desperately want it to succeed. That said, I had long discussion with the mayor yesterday and a couple other council members, and I am going to vote no tonight, but I hope that when we get, when we go back into discussion about what this agreement is going to look like, that there will be a earmark of how much of this money that is gonna come back to the city will go to stormwater, and that I will, my final decision is not necessarily a no if we can accomplish a deal that has dedicated funding to stormwater in the future. So with that, I did want to say that I like the project, but it will be a no from me tonight.
Is there anybody else? Sabrina.
I would like to also thank everyone for coming out to speak tonight. And I'd like to say that I'm really encouraged by this project for three main reasons. Number one, the developer who's local, has, lives here, has invested interest in our community and our city. Also, the fact that they've reached out to the community, had over 40 engagements with the community, not just regular question ask, but all actual engaging with the community, asking for suggestions, going back and changing and revising what they were doing to meet the interest of those who were involved. And thirdly, the fact that it engages the youth. It's important that our youth are, stay here, and I believe that this project will make certain that this is a place where our young adults want to live, work, and play. So, thank you.
Anybody else?
I'll just, I'd just also like to continue. I'm obviously in favor of this because the Beach District has needed some help with the roads, and this term sheet will allow us to have some money for roads. It'll have money for flooding. Whenever we fix roads, we address flooding in that area. It'll allow us to have parking, which was a big issue at the last election, and people wanted more parking. And finally, I think it's a great time to rebuild the dome, the iconic structure we used to have there, and be able to have a music venue, so.
Thank you. And if I could just make a comment. You know, there was a mention about transparency and the need for transparency and fairness. I guess it was about a year and a half ago or so, I was approached by some, a couple of the Venture people, and they said, what would it take to get a project of this magnitude passed? Engagement. Get out there, talk to the people, explain what's going on. And I think that's an important consideration. It was even, you know, noted by a couple of the opponents that they were forthright and forthcoming. And this is a non-binding term sheet that allows them the opportunity to go forward and come get more details and to answer the questions. And I believe in all honesty, and I think by the way that, you know, that the developer has approached us, that the transparency will go on, the public education will go on. And this could be the template of the business, of the type of projects going forward that we need. Now, being elected mayor after being a councilman for 14 years, I look at life through a different prism. It is my, one of our responsibility to bring more wealth, new money into this city. And I think by doing this, we send a message that Virginia Beach has opened a business, we're willing to listen. When we have somebody comes up, this is a very innovative, transformational project. And that, as we've mentioned before, that dome sat there for decades, not generating the money that it deserved to do. But I am confident that going forward, that the details are going to be forthcoming, and the public is going to be engaged, this council is gonna be engaged. And we're gonna send, and this is gonna help generate the money. We have to get, let's let business pay for stormwater and other projects and police. You know, we can't be going to the residential taxpayer. We have to bring new business in, and I think this sends the positive message. At this point, the vote's open.
By a vote of nine to one, you've approved a resolution to approve the non-binding term sheet for the Dome Site project.
Just take a second here.
He didn't ask, I'm sorry. We had somebody, I'm sorry.
Okay, we're up to J. 9C, $1.5 million for Virginia Commonwealth Opportunity Fund to FY 1819 Economic Development Operating Budget RE Incentive Award.
Rhona Marsh is the first speaker, and Reed Greenman is the second.
Hi, Rhona.
Good evening, Council. I'll start speaking since you probably started the clock on me. I sent you all an email, so I will just read my email because I think it was fairly succinct. In 17 years, how did Virginia Beach go from the 2001 surplus of $63 million in the pension retirement accounts for city police, fire, and city workers, and schoolteachers, and administrators, to more than a $1.2 billion pension retiree benefits shortfall? So think about that. What? We had $63 million in 2001, and now we have a $1.2 billion shortfall. Wow. Okay. So I'm a Virginia Beach taxpayer. When I pay my taxes, I have to pay 100% of my taxes. I don't get to pay 60%, or 70%, or 80%. Mr. Hanson and the council expect me to pay 100% of what you bill me, all right? But it seems that the city's unfunded pension liabilities keep ballooning bigger and bigger because the city of Virginia Beach has quietly been making smaller pension payments, as little as 65% in 2012. Back in 2001, again, that was only 17 years ago, very short time ago. 17 years ago, they were making 105% payments. So what happened to have us go from 105% payments in 2001 to 65% payments that gave us this big surplus, this big shortage, okay? We have, in the years of 2011, 2012, 2013, and 2014, and I've circled those on here, those are years we've been making between 68, 67, 63, and 66%. We're making very small payments. We're underfunding our pension, and this is gonna come back to bite the next generation if we don't start funding the pension. Do we have sticky fingers that are using that money for something else? Because I'm paying the money to pay the pensions and to pay for the pay compression and to use properly. And if you're not gonna pay for the pensions, where's the money going? It's not rocket science that if you underpay, there's a shortage, so the pension unfunded liabilities grew. There are 370 million short in the city police and fire. The schoolteachers and administrators are about 640 million short. The retiree healthcare is 68 million, and the retiree pool benefits are 165 million. Add those all up, and you get $1.234 billion. So from 63 million surplus in 2001 to $1,243 million shortage, where did the taxes go?
Rhona, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Reed Greenman, and then Barbara Messner.
Good evening, everyone. I couldn't hear what the issue was back there. What are we talking on?
Okay, this is $1.8 million from Virginia Commonwealth Opportunity Fund to Fiscal 201819 Economic Operating Budget Incentive Award.
Okay, thank you. I don't like this entire concept that we're using. I think what we've done is a body, both at the state level, the governor, the General Assembly, and here at the local level with our local city governor. I think we've confused what our jobs are. We tend to look at ourselves as economic developers and real estate developers rather than services providers and taking care of flooding and infrastructure and those kinds of things. And tonight, you've heard a lot about it. You're saying, well, if we could invest in this, then we'll earn more tax revenue back, and it should offset the tax rate, and then we'll have more money. Except, that's not really the reality of it. Now, tonight, of course, you're gonna accept these funds. Why wouldn't you? You're gonna put them into the Virginia Beach Development Authority and the Department of Economic Development for their budget to give out grants. But that's where that process ends. We really need to go back and rethink. You're elected to represent us, the General Assembly is, not the Development Authority and not the Governor's Opportunity Fund. Over and over, you guys confuse economic development, Barbara, with what your job is up here, which is to take care of the city and provide for the citizens what we need. So my concern to you is, over and over, we seem to accept the status quo as the cost of doing business is that we've gotta give away the farm to bribe people to come here, not the private sector. Wave Pool's a great project. It ought to make money, looks that way. But we shouldn't be involved in it in the first place. We should sell the land so it goes back on the tax roll and generates real estate. The assessment today at the city manager's, $13 million, $37 million. Opportunity Fund, you're calling this economic development. The reason these things are all related is you guys get confused on what your job is. You're not real estate developers. You should be taking care of the flooding. That's what they're trying to tell you. And the walk and chew gum thing? The private sector does investment and reaps the return. The government gets out of the way. You guys are putting yourself in public-private partnerships and injecting yourselves and using our tax money like we're a bank. Opportunity Fund, free money. No, it isn't. It's state money and it's taxpayer money. So anyway, my whole point to you is, I think you guys sometimes get confused on the role of government versus the private sector. Thank you.
Thank you, Reed.
Barbara Messner.
Welcome back.
Thank you. But I told Inwood Branch years ago, I'll tell all of y'all, I don't know how you look in the mirror, how you sleep at night. Stealing our money and giving it to developers, and a lot of you have conflicts. It's torture to come here and watch one token vote that's on the verge of changing her mind. Okay, $1.8 million. We already passed the general budget. Why are you rating the budget again? These incentives are to lure another IT company, another private company to our city. We've spent a fortune in marketing, advertising on all these projects. The city land that y'all keep talking about sitting there, that's municipal parking lot. You systematically remove the parking at the oceanfront for locals and increase the parking for Breeden, for Bruce Thompson, for the 31st Street Hotel, for the Cavalier Hotel, for Birlidge Management, the 9th Street, the first parking garage. Yeah, this, this is your brochure on parking. Y'all even advertise free parking November through March. But the lots, the few lots, like Rudy Lou, they're locked. There's a Facebook page, Parking Restrictions, Virginia Beach. It's got pictures of this, this. Anyway, why have a budget if you're just gonna keep rating it and giving your money away to private developers? Y'all wouldn't be voting if you didn't have some reward. Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion?
Move approval.
Second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, vote's open.
By a vote of 10 to 0, you've approved the ordinance to accept and appropriate $1.8 million regarding the incentive award.
Okay, next item is J. 11, Ordinance to Transfer $268,000 from General Fund to Contingencies to the FY 1819 Emergency Medical Services Operating Budget for Lifeguard Services Contract and authorize city manager to execute a contract for oceanfront lifeguard services with Virginia Beach Life Saving Services.
We have one speaker, Barbara Messner.
I wish the taxpayers' alliance and the other groups, you know, spoke out on all waste, fraud, and abuse. This one's also for tourism, $1.8 million. Let's see. Now, this one's $268,000 from the general fund again. You're rating the general fund. You just approved the budget for 2018 through 2019. Yeah, we need more money. There's, there's more people coming here, 8 million people. Good evening, Mr. Jones. There's 8 million tourists. There's more tourists that come here that we cater to than there are local residents. There's 460,000 residents. Yeah, our firemen are stressed, our police are stressed, and we need the money for flooding. You can take general funds for tourism, but you can't do it for basic city services. Shame on all of you.
Okay. Any discussion?
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
Vote's open.
By a vote of 10 to 0, you've approved the ordinance to transfer funds regarding the life-saving services.
Okay, we're moving on to planning. Item 5, Piney Grove Baptist Church.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, my name is Joseph P. Burgess III. I've been in, I've been in Virginia Beach since 1985. 2019 marks the 149th year the Piney Grove Baptist Church is part of the Virginia Beach community. Within this timeframe, the church continues to grow, and its mission continues to evolve. However, the core principles are one, inclusion of all members of society regardless of age, sex, race. sex, race, natural origin, or social standing remain consistent. Two, offering a safe haven for all to practice their faith under the First Amendment of the Constitution of the United States. Three, praying over, caring for, and visiting the sick among us. Four, affording support for individuals and families when the loss of a loved one occurs. Five, furnishing food and substance to many less fortunate. Six, supporting members of the armed forces of the United States. And seven, affording hope for the hopeless and our midst. Now, this is just a snippet of what this church provides for this community. It is a belief that the Virginia Beach community and all the communities across this nation want the ideals that I mentioned here this evening. If I could paraphrase scripture, it says that "we are our brother's keeper." It also mentions the fact that "a kingdom divided, or a city divided, shall be brought low." In that light, I encourage all parties in this matter to come together and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Donna...Donna Willey.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me. My name is Donna Willey. Good evening, Mayor Dyer and council, and prayers to John Moss for a speedy recovery. Just let you know, I'm speaking on behalf of the neighborhood for 10 minutes. Can you play my... Of course. I'm speaking for 10 minutes on behalf of the entire neighborhood, if I may allow. Okay. Thank you for having me here today. I think it's important to note that we are here today because the applicant never complied with the conditions as required, and city staff failed to enforce the CUP for an entire year. The reason I'm speaking here tonight is twofold. First, we have the concern with conditions approved by city council on the CUP specifically written to protect the adjacent homeowners from excessive lighting are not in compliance and not being enforced by city staff. Secondly, we still have many unresolved issues of drainage that was addressed to council more than a year ago. The applicant was asked to meet with the homeowners to discuss outstanding issues and only agreed to meet under his conditions, which is not in the spirit and cooperation of that meeting. The homeowners were more than happy to meet and requested another meeting last week, but the applicant refused. In light of the applicant's recent decision to retract its modification request, we recently learned the applicant stated the reason for withdrawing the request was because he and his lighting team just discovered new technology that would allow for adding motion sensors to the existing lights. However, there are many documented emails dating back to a year ago that demonstrate the applicant was adamantly opposed to the motion sensors, refused to comply with the conditions, and continued to prolong the process for compliance for over one year. They submitted many estimates to city staff almost a year ago, and that clearly outlined the utilization of motion sensors. This is not new technology and has existed for over 20 years. They have had over a year to figure this out, and now we're being told it will take another six months to fix. We feel it's imperative that a meeting takes place before the lights are ordered so that council can ensure all options included are included so that the lights will be in compliance with the conditions. Mr. Frankenfeld has not shared any of the specifications of the new lights to determine whether the lights will be in compliance with the condition. This causes a concern because the original lights, as you know, were ordered without shields and motion sensors. It appears the lights chosen will have a secondary source of light that remains on all night, and this is no way complies with the conditions. This project's council approval has been rife with act now, ask for forgiveness later, creating more issues that continually violate the conditions and never get addressed. If we don't meet and get all the questions answered now, then we will be right back here again in a few months with the same concerns. The simple statement that they're ordering the motion sensors, so all is good, is not addressing all the other factors that determine compliance. Because, as you know, the shields were required condition, and the city had to shoulder the cost of the shields at $2,000 because the applicant and his contractor failed to order the shields. This project has deviated severely from the approved plans, and because of the city's mistake, the homeowners are stuck with this extremely high elevated parking lot raised five feet above our homes forever. And we all know this was a mistake, and the elevated park...excuse me, elevated height was unknown to everyone, until I saw firsthand that the constructed lot behind my home was increasing in height every day and was now at the top of my six-foot privacy fence. Mayor Sesames visited my home with Councilwoman Henley and apologized for the mistake and said, "We will do everything to make this better for you." As you know, the pastor rejected a perfect solution offered by the city at no expense to his church, and his reason was, he feels no need to make any changes to satisfy the neighborhood and let the burden be on the homeowners. This was a recommendation from council, excuse me, directed from city staff...sorry. This was a recommendation from city council, and staff never followed through with this, and I don't understand how two employees under their own authority can supersede council's recommendation. There are so many issues that need to be revisited, and I feel council should do everything in their power to make this right for the homeowners. This cannot be lost on this city. The plans were approved with assurance that the applicant would fully comply with all the approved conditions. Tonight, we ask city council for clarification on the written conditions. City council is the only governed body which can clarify the intent behind the CUP and its practical application. It is our understanding that the intent and spirit of the CUP was to protect the adjacent homeowners from any adverse effect and maintain compatibility with the adjoining neighborhood. If there are conditions being modified at this time tonight, the conditions should not be dictated solely on the applicant's desires, and the homeowner should be carefully considered, and any new condition should be agreed by all parties, not just one, because all parties were involved and were included when the conditions were drafted in 2015. Conditions were written to protect the neighborhood from excessive lighting, and council was very confident the conditions were written clearly in standard language. Why even have this process or public hearing if every applicant can simply choose to reward the conditions based on his own interpretations of the condition? Every CUP approved from here on out will be effectively meaningless and not enforceable. The largest source of the dispute seems to be the meaning of in-use. City management, without the authority or direction from city council, has decided that 10:00 PM each night, no matter the circumstances, signals the time when the facility is not in use. The CUP approved by city council states nothing that supports the city management's broad discretion in this matter. The CUP does not specify any fixed time when not in use means not in use. The discussion shouldn't be centered around hours of operation because the words "in use" means "in use," and that facility is being occupied. And if council interpreted "in use" any differently when they wrote that condition, then we need to...we need council to clarify their intent of meaning "in use." The CUP clearly states the lights must remain on on motion sensors when the facility is not in use. Councilwoman Henley informed us her interpretation of the CUP intended for the lights to be on when the facility was in use and off when the facility was not in use. And the applicant worked very closely with her, fully agreed to these conditions, and assured council he would comply. The facility is in use anywhere between two and four nights at most each week for weeknight events, and it has held that same pattern for over 20 years. The cars arrive early and depart at the same time, and the facility is locked, the alarm is set, and no one is arriving later in the evening. The lot is usually empty by 8:30 each night, yet the lights remain on every night till 10:00 or later. If one or two people remain at the facility late, there are approximately 60 parking spaces up front directly in front of the church where the front doors are or behind the church where it is brightly illuminated from dusk to dawn, making it safe for anyone arriving or leaving at any time during the night. We understand the congregation needs security, lighting at night, but there are over 170 parking spaces behind the homes that remain empty every night, and any one of...every one of those lights remain on every night for no reason. This portion of the parking lot has only been used a few times in the past year for weeknight events, so I don't understand why there needs to be...why there's a need to leave so many lights on if they're not needed. It seems that any reasonable person would agree to keep the lights off when not needed to save money. The simple and most economical approach would be to keep these lights off and on motion sensors only at night when this portion of the lot, and to leave all the other lights up front along the side and the back on from dusk to dawn for security. Last year, the applicant sent city staff an email stating in his own very words that the volume of cars arriving at night for weeknight events will not be abundant and that cars will be parked by the homes. They were logically parked closer to the building and away from the homes. So with that affirmative statement, the applicant stated that cars will not be parked in the lot behind the homes during evening functions. Given that admission, keeping the lights off and on motion sensors only behind the homes would best serve the interests of everyone and alleviate the excessive lighting at nighttime and save money. In January, the city agreed to a temporary agreement whereby the applicant may have the lights on and a timer that would automatically turn them off at 10:00 PM each night, only until the motion sensors were installed. Now, the applicant seeks to make that temporary agreement a permanent solution, which completely undermines the spirit and intended purpose of the condition itself. Nowhere in the condition does it state anything about a 10:00 PM cutoff or a timer. Keeping lights on the timer, the applicant is left to interpret in-use by his own interpretation, whereby the applicant demonstrated by using a timer, the lights will remain on every night regardless. These modifications were unilaterally crafted, implemented by the applicant under the pretense that the facility is in use until 10:00 PM each night. However, most nights the facility is not in use, certainly not until 10:00 PM. We're in the position where we feel like we need to physically document this reality with pictures because the applicant's statement of hours of operation is not a reflection of reality and not what we're seeing on a nightly basis. The facility is not in use on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday evenings unless it's a holiday, yet every light remains on for the entire weekend until 10:00 PM. It's like a ball field back there, and I would really appreciate any of you to come back there so you can see what we're seeing. We ask that the nine lights in the parking lot behind the homes remain off and on motion sensors only and to be manually turned on when the portion of the parking lot will be used for events where attendance is high. We do ask, however, that city council clarify the meaning of in-use because the conditions do not provide for the use of a timer or a 10:00 PM cutoff, and we do not feel either should be substituted for the original language of in-use. In-use is very standard language and is defined as the facility is being occupied, so perhaps the condition needs to be worded only so it's clear and concise and specifically states occupies. Otherwise, it will be an ongoing issue of semantics. Our request can be supported based on the following. The finished grade of the parking lot is four feet above the original grade of the use of the land used to construct the parking lot. Every tree was cut down in that buffer area.
Thank you very much.
Done? Okay, I'm sorry.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Buddy Sparrow.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Buddy Sparrow. I reside at 2813 Bald Eagle Road, directly adjacent to Piney Grove Baptist Church. I understand the applicant has withdrawn their modification for the request of modification to remove the motion sensors from their conditional use permit, but the community has some concerns over the applicant's interpretation of the conditions, and we also have some concerns over the implementation of their plan. I believe Ms. Henley, during the informal session, kind of indicated that she had some concerns because it's not real clear how they plan to implement this, whether the lights are going to be on all night at a reduced level. Until we have those answers, we still have some concerns. During an April meeting with the planning director, Ms. Henley, and other staff, the residents did agree to meet with the applicant. We've tried to meet with them several times, and that's not happened. Additionally, we did...the community did agree that if the applicant would turn the lights off, that the community would support their motion to remove the motion sensor requirement. Mr. Frankenfeld was supposed to take that to the applicant, and our understanding is the applicant refused to just turn the lights off. So, I mean, had they just...had they just admitted or accepted turning the lights off, they wouldn't be required...we would have supported their motion to remove the motion sensors. We wouldn't be here tonight. We...they would be saving money. I mean, they wouldn't be incurring the expense. We're still open to that. If they would just turn the lights off when they're not using the lot, then everybody would be happy, I believe. I believe Mrs. Willey talked a little bit about the definitions in the conditional use permit about in-use. I'm not...I couldn't hear very well how much she went in depth about that. But I believe, again, Ms. Henley brought that up in the informal, that that is another concern of the community's is the define...definition of in-use as it applies to when the lights need to be on and off. I understand the council has nothing to determine tonight since the applicant's withdrawing their proposal. I would invite you, any of you that have an opportunity to come out and see the site, Mayor Dyer, I believe you actually offered so far.
Yep.
During the planning session, the planning commissioners, several of them, took a site trip out there, and one of them's response in the transcript was he was shocked. Ms. Henley, when her...I was there, her first visit out to the site, and her jaw almost literally hit the floor at the difference that this site has made to our community. There's no other site like it in the community in Virginia Beach where a single-family house has been torn down and a parking lot raised four and a half feet because of that, because of the uniqueness of this site and its situation. Some unique situations, some unique solutions to some of the problems of meshing this into the community probably need to be evaluated. If that's motion sensors, if that's just turning off the lights, whatever the case may be, the community's open to that discussion. I...other than that, I have nothing else, and I thank you for your opportunity.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it.
That's all the speakers.
Okay, anybody else would like to speak on this? Okay, discussion. Ms. Henley?
Well, I was really hoping we were going to be able to come to you with a good...is there another speaker?
We have another speaker.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, y'all. I'm sorry, didn't necessarily have to sign up. I apologize. I'm representing the Piney Grove Baptist Church. My name is Eddie Abrams. I'm one of the founding partners of Pace Collaborative. We're the electrical engineers who have been working with the city and the church to resolve the lighting issue. Is this okay?
Make sure, before you leave, you give your name and address and phone number to the clerk.
I apologize. I got here a little bit later.
Okay, thank you.
So, we...we did not do the original design for the lighting at the parking lot, but we were involved in the electrical design of the building, and we were brought in when these issues arose and have been working with the church for the...since that time, since these issues came up. We made a lot of adjustments to those fixtures that are out there now, and they...they're right, they do turn off at 10:00 PM. We put shields on them. We...I personally was out there many nights taking light readings and, you know, recorded zero-foot candles. That's a lighting measurement. That's a light level measurement, vertical and horizontal around the perimeter, and we fine-tuned the lighting system out there to provide the least zero lighting at the property line. However, we've recently been meeting with the city, I mean, with the church and the pastor, and we have come across a relatively...it's not brand-new, but it's a proven technology to change the lighting system out, and the church is willing to change those light fixtures out. I'll kind of go into a little bit of technical ease, if you will. The lighting fixtures out there now have very large LEDs. The new fixtures will have very small LEDs, only more of them. It'll be the same lumen output, plus or minus a little bit. And we...I've already done the design to provide zero-foot candles at the property line. These lighting fixtures are Wi-Fi connected to a system that will be in the church. Each fixture is programmable, and it has motion sensing built into each fixture. But we're proposing right now to replace the eight fixtures in the main parking lot. There's one fixture over on the side that near the building, which is, as I understand, the conditional use permit is allowed to stay on. So, we're developing a programming scheme which would allow the fixtures at the very back to go off, or at very least, I understand right now, I'm trying to verify exactly how low we can go. I know we can go to 1%, which is virtually no light coming out of that fixture. The one in the back corner nearest the residence, one of the residence, and the one in the other corner, we would set down after 10 o'clock or at a predetermined time to be down at the lowest level. Once they detect motion, fixtures will come up to only 40% or 50% or 50% brightness, depending on what we want to design and what we think is safe and good design. Right now, I think I've got them set at about 50%. It would come up 50% for 10 minutes. If there's no motion, they go back off or go back to 0% or 1%. The other thing that we're going to do, that we...the church has agreed to do in these fixtures is the color...the color of those fixtures that are out there now is a very blue, very white color. It's 4,000K. We are proposing to go with a 3,000K lighting fixture. That way, the color will be warmer, more like what you are sitting under right now with these types of lights. That is the proposal, and that is why the church has requested to... That is the proposal, and that is why the church has requested to, made their request to remove this, the previous request.
Well, that's what I kind of wanted to hear. Is there any reason why you would not be able to sit down with the community and tell them what you're planning and let them understand it? Because that's sort of the problem. Now, when you said that you could put it down to a very low level, back by the houses, each one could be done individually, so actually if there were no cars in the parking lot, there wouldn't be any problem with taking it down earlier than 10:00 and still leave those up around the church for the custodian to finish his job? Would there be?
We can talk to the operation of the, I want to talk to the pastor about the operation of the church, but there could be, yes. Yes, ma'am. I don't know why we would not do something like that, but we could find out how they operate.
Well, could we, and this was what I was going to suggest before, and since we didn't have this idea to be able to, that we simply, you know, defer this action until that date that you say it's going to be in, and if everything is satisfactory, then we just, everything is done and we're finished? Is that, Mr. Stiles, we talked about how best to do this to make certain that we don't think that we're going to get one thing and then get something else later. How can we be assured that we're going to get what has been described here?
Well, Mrs. Henley, you can always defer this for future consideration, and I believe you've expressed what you hope to see to occur in that time. And then when it comes back, if everything's been accomplished, then you can just permit the withdrawal and move forward like that, in that manner.
And then we can say the condition has been met. When do you expect that you would be able to accomplish this?
The fixtures take a 12-week delivery time. I have a contractor, we have a contractor who actually did the work out there, who's willing to come back and help replace the fixtures. It's a pretty easy fix, take one down, put them back up. We'll need a bucket truck and some other things, but a couple, two or three days to do that, so I would say within three months to give us some leeway. If we hit the factory at the wrong time, you know, the fixtures may take longer, but I'm told that it's a 12-week lead time to get the fixtures right now. One of the things we want to do is get as much of the pre-programming done at the factory. That is the best way to do this. So, we have to take some time to, you know, identify which fixture is going to operate in which manner and proceed in that way.
Does that seem to be?
Do you want to do just indefinite deferral?
Well, I think if we make it a time certain so that we know that it's going to come back, I think if you said three months, so let's say four months, four months from this date, we will have it back and we'll see how it's turned out, and we will hope everything is just fine and the neighbors are satisfied. But if you would agree to, you know, to kind of touch base with the neighbors to make certain that we all have the right understanding, that, you know, we want the condition to be met. And I know that a part of the problem in coming up with enforcement is that the condition says all lighting, all parking lot lighting shall be on motion sensors at night when the church is not in use. And that, I think, has been a little bit of the difficulty in determining when the church is not in use, whether it's, you know, with their business hours, plus an hour for custodial help is kind of the way it's been interpreted, whereas, you know, some of us may have thought it meant, you know, when there was a large service or something. So, but the main thing is, is that we are mindful of the impact on the neighbors because this does say that all lighting should be directed downward and not spill over into adjoining neighboring lots. And sometimes maybe that candle measurement may have one result and the actuality may be something else. So, I hope we can work this out amicably.
Yes, ma'am.
I really appreciate your attitude and hope that this will work. Is that?
Do we have a motion?
So, May 21st is what the clerk said.
Okay, then we will defer to May 21st, and by that time, we hope everybody's happy, if that's possible.
A second.
A second. Okay, vote is open. And sir, if you can give your information to the clerk, and thank you for coming forward. I think you clarified a lot of stuff, so that was a good thing.
By a vote of 10 to 0, you've deferred the Pioneer Grove application to May 21st.
Okay, our next item, number 11.
Number 7.
7.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it a whole lot.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Antonio, okay, number 7, Antonio Alvarado, conditional change of zoning, residential light industrial.
Sorry, Eddie Burdon is the first speaker.
Say who? Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, Honorable Members of City Council, for the record, Eddie Burdon, Deputy Attorney, representing Anthony Azvedo. This application, I believe, was on the consent agenda, and given the number of speakers you have on the next item, I understand there's one speaker in opposition who is not a neighbor, not adjacent property owner, all of whom we have been in contact with throughout this process, so I would just request an opportunity to rebut.
Just since you're up there, do you have any problem with these conditions, 10 through 14, which say that if outdoor lighting is proposed, the applicant shall submit a photometric plan, and said plan shall specify light fixture, all outdoor lighting shall be no taller than 14 feet, going to be shielded away from the adjacent residential? I mean, you don't have any problem with this?
No, ma'am.
And you think you're going to be able to do it easily? Because we don't want any of the neighbors in the nice, wonderful Sea-Tac community to be impacted by this light.
We have.
And you're happy?
No problems with that whatsoever.
No problem.
Thank you. No, ma'am. None.
Thank you, Mr. Burdon.
Sure. Barbara Messner?
Good evening. Y'all are familiar with the battery manufacturing facility that's right up the road. There were 2,000 signatures from the people in this area. They were all notified. This one, you only notify people who are directly, Barry finally just sent me the list of the people that were notified. This is another storage unit. I just read, I can't even remember how many it was. It was tons of auctions for these storage units. It's like all these people use the storage units, and then they make extra money, you know, auctioning off the people's property. A lot of it's military, too. This is 311 South Bird Neck Road, across from Carissa Court. The ad ran two days before Christmas, two days before New Year's, and I've spoken to people that live on Carissa Court, several of them. They weren't notified, they're not happy about this. You didn't even give a deferral last time, so they didn't even bother to come. I sent a letter. How many of y'all received my letter and read it? Ms. Henley's the only one. I copied it to you. Did you not give them a copy, or did they just not read it?
I received it. I read it.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Anyway, at the planning meeting, which I watched because it was the day after last Tuesday's council meeting, and I didn't attend, I know that it was confirmed that my letter was received because I called several people. My letter wasn't read. Dee Branch Oliver, when somebody told her it was a resident, she said, "Oh, it's just a resident," and she just tossed it away like that. And Dave Redman of DeVars, before they took a vote, when he discussed it, he said, "There's no opposition." I told Barry and I asked him to let y'all know that that was not correct and that the deferral was because a lot of people were away for Christmas, and they didn't even know about it until after the fact. You know, our 14th Amendment right to due process. I'll leave this, which y'all have already seen, but it doesn't look like you read them anyway. There's one of the, this is the agenda when you did the swearing-in, you added a giant gavel, double spacing, but this is a normal one in the paper. It's this tiny little font. You have to blow it up to be able to read it, so.
Thank you, Ms. Messner.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers. That is not how we see it in the paper.
Yes, unfortunately, Ms. Messner is confused. This is, she's speaking about an application that hasn't come to City Council yet. It's not a storage facility either. This is an outdoor storage yard for an existing Virginia Beach business. It's been operating on this industrial zone piece of property for a number of years, and there was a previous owner who was similarly operating an outdoor storage yard for a one business. It's not a storage facility like she's referring to. There is one home on this property, it's split zoning, it's a complicated set of facts. Mr. Fine got this property zoned like this a number of years ago, but it is not what she's even speaking about. The homeowners cooperated, we, you know, worked through all the issues with them, they don't oppose, and it's back in the woods, surrounded by trees, and it's an outdoor storage yard for a landscaping business in an APZ2 and the highest noise zone on properties already zoned industrial. And we're protecting the house, creating a buffer behind it, and the only reason we're having to rezone the shared entrance drive aisle is because of a Supreme Court case that occurred after the property was rezoned, Virginia Supreme Court case, so it has to be rezoned industrial, the drive aisle. Pretty simple application, and I'm sorry we had to spend a few hours down here on something that she's talking about a different application entirely.
Thank you, Mr. Burdon. Mr. Mayor, I've actually gone and just verified the details that he just said. I'm not aware of any conflict with this zoning.
Okay. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, that being said, do we have a motion?
I so move.
Second.
Okay, discussion, anybody? Okay, vote is open.
By a vote of 10 to 0, you've approved the application of Antonio Azvedo, the change of zoning.
Okay, thank you. Now we move forward to number 11, ordinance to amend sections 102, 111, 401, 501, 601, 901, 1110, 1125, 1521, 2103 of the city zoning ordinance, and section 5.2, the Oceanfront Resort District Form Base Code, and add sections 209.6 and 24.2 to the CZO definition requirements and use of home sharing and short-term rentals.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I wanted to go ahead and bring that motion forward from the Planning Commission.
No, we have.
We have to hear the speaker.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm still making mistakes myself.
Sorry, guys.
First speaker is Elaine Fekety, and then the next speaker will be Dana Sampson.
Welcome, Elaine.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer and council members. My name is Elaine Fekety, and I've had the pleasure of voicing my opinion over short-term rentals for the last three and a half years, so tonight I'm going to take a little different stance. Pretend, if you will, that I am representing a large group of individual and business investors. We would like to be located in Virginia Beach. We will only take up a small five-mile stretch of land in the southernmost tip of the city. First of all, this is what we will not do. We will not ask for gap financing, tax breaks, or public funding of any kind. This is what we will do. We will finance and purchase our own property. We will pay real estate taxes on an amount estimated to be 1.4 billion in fiscal year 2019. Not only that, just for kicks, we're going to add an extra six cents per hundred dollars assessed to build a sand replenishment fund. We will generate tax revenues around $28 million annually, and it will go to the general fund for the rest of the city. We will have 1,752 individual stormwater fees that we will pay monthly gladly for our neighbors to the west because we don't have ditches or storm drains. We will create and/or support 13,650 jobs, including local contract workers. We will host 17,000 rentals a year. We will welcome over 12,000 visitors a day during the summer, many of them locals who go to our parking lots and pay us $5. We then take that $5 per however many thousand cars that is and put it in an envelope and send it right back to you for the general fund. We will, for all of our business activity, we will remit the 6% sales tax, and 1% of that comes back to the city, the standard 8% sales tax. And again, just for kicks, we'll collect an additional 1.5% to go to our sand fund. When that fund runneth over, we will gladly send the overflow back to you again for the city kitty. On this year's budget, you were already anticipating $8 million on that overflow. We will continue to let $5 million from our SSD automatically go to the school budget. We will support our own rescue services and send them to you when available. We will have two police officers for this area, and we will have the absolute lowest crime rate in the entire city. We will ask nothing from you in return, nothing, except to actually allocate the money we remit for our sand and roads to actually be spent on our sand and roads. A vote for anything any more restrictive than what the Planning Commission came back with is a vote for this business proposal that I just presented to you, and I want all of the citizens of Virginia Beach to be informed on the financial impact of this vote. It is essentially choking the neck of a golden goose, and make no mistake, families that cannot be in our houses are going to the Outer Banks, not the hotels.
Thank you very much.
Dana Sampson. And after Ms. Sampson will be Jim Moffitt.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm the owner of several properties in Virginia Beach that are used as short-term rentals. I'm also a frequent traveler and lover of non-hotel accommodations when I visit other cities, whether it be a U.S. city or an international destination. Privately owned short-term rentals provide for the average traveler a taste of their destination that is unlike what a hotel can provide. They promote small businesses in the city, give recommendations for spots that one does not typically find in an online search, and provide income to local residents that rely on it, and in turn, put it back in the community. Through the years that I've been hosting my short-term rentals, I have found that the recommendations that I give to my guests have resulted in an increase for businesses, for local businesses in Virginia Beach, and that my guests have spent money and time doing activities that they normally wouldn't have found if they were staying in a hotel. I have read the most recent updated proposed regulations submitted by the Planning Commission and can see the necessity and reasonableness of them. Although I would like to see no regulation on the amount of contracts, I can understand there needs to be something for some places that, I guess, neighborhoods that are seeing more nightly turnover. The recent proposal of two rental contracts for seven days is much more reasonable than one every seven days. Personally, I would like three every seven days because of our off-season. Our oceanfront studio apartment caters to a lot of people that come for just quick weekend getaways in the off-season, also for events at the convention center and for business conferences. I would definitely suffer a loss if we were regulated to one contract for seven days. So, two contracts is much more reasonable, but three would definitely be better. 2019 has ushered in a new type of traveler, those that don't want to stay at hotels and would prefer the special touches and intimacy that short-term rental accommodations provide. You can see for yourself in just a quick search of the area, Airbnbs in Virginia Beach, what the short-term rental owners offer for their guests. We take pride in making sure that the experience our guests have is second to none and that they'll keep coming back to our city. After all, I want to keep Virginia Beach growing in a positive direction, and my little chunk of Virginia Beach with my short-term rental business is bringing quality guests and their pocketbooks into their city. I also want to continue to, with my husband, invest and develop in our city versus taking it to other coastal cities. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Jim Moffitt. And after Mr. Moffitt is Ken Leach.
Mayor, City Council, thank you for letting me speak tonight. I wish I was speaking on a dome. It was much more exciting than short-term rentals. My first letter was written back in June 30th, 2015, concerning short-term rentals. Over three and a half years later, we're still discussing them. I'm trying to clear my mind up on some of these issues. City Council has sent short-term rentals down to the Planning Commission twice. First time it came back, and most of the recommendations were trashed by the City Council, and another alternative plan was developed. It was sent down to Planning Commission again to find a solution for all of Virginia Beach. This is the first time that Sandbridge is as close as it is to agreeing to the majority Each city council member assigns people to the planning commission. The people in the planning commission are highly respected. Eleven commissioners came up with a solution, and for the second time again, I'm afraid it's going to be trashed again. Sandbridge has the largest number of short-term rentals in Virginia Beach, yet we're catering to an area like Bayside that has one of the least amount of short-term rentals in the city. The City Beach Convention and Visitors Bureau has given out a handout, which was attached to a note sent to all of you the other day. It states that the average length of stay in Virginia Beach on an overnight trip is 2.8 nights. It's the facts, and why would you only try to pass one reservation per week when history proves otherwise? Every one of the houses has passed all the zoning requirements. Owners have bought these homes expecting to make a certain amount of income. It is wrong to take this away from them anywhere in the city. Taking the occupancy to three still affects 37 homes just for my Sandbridge realty. And because occupancy has been reduced, so will the rent. We'll be paying those owners $1 million less in income, along with the loss of the 9.5% we pay the city. And we just wonder, is that really fair? We pay the lowest real estate tax in Hampton Roads, and you're playing with a successful generator of income for the city, tourism. Pass the planning commission version tonight for all of Virginia Beach. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ken Leach. And then after that is Walter Parsick.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, council members, and City Manager Dave Hanson. My name is Ken Leach. I'm here tonight to request the city council to accept the planning commission's current proposal on short-term rentals for the city of Virginia Beach. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Walter Parsick. Joan Davis. And then the next speaker is Mike Griffith.
Welcome.
Welcome, Mayor. Thank you. Mayor, members of council, city manager, my name is Joan Davis, and I'm a lifelong resident of the area. And I'm not going to tell you how long that is, because then you know how old I am. And the only thing I'm here tonight is to ask you to please pass the proposal that planning commission has put forward to you. And I just thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mike Griffith. And after Mr. Griffith is Jean Davis.
Good evening. My name is Mike. I'm the owner of Chick's Beach Rental and Fishing, owner-operator. I'm retiring in two months. My paperwork's in. It's a set deal because my business has been blossoming over the last few years, my fishing and rental business. And I support regulations on our business because regulations promote goodness, supports those of us who do it right, those of us who've been paying our taxes and treating our neighborhoods well. I urge you to adopt it. My concern is, when I went to the planning commission, that it seemed like the city council wanted one per week versus a two. If it's changed to one, then you're shutting me down. I did some math today. I'll lose 43% of my business. I don't know if there's any fishermen here, but if you go on a fishing trip and you fish one day, how many nights do you rent? Two, maybe three? Fish two days, you rent three, maybe four. I've got a, I'm living my dream. I'm retiring, and I've got my fishing and rental business I wanted my whole life. And guys and women and families come, they rent, they hang out the beach, we go fishing, we grill our fish for dinner. Three days later, another family shows up, and we do it all over again. I won't be able to do that, so you're shutting me down. And I think, I probably speak for a lot of people in my situation who probably don't even know their, their, their business is on the chopping block tonight if you do that one per week. And for life of me, I don't understand why, what is one? I've heard, somebody said, well, it's because of the event houses. Well, there's better ways of controlling event houses without shutting down the little mom and pops like myself. Then I heard that from the real estate people that you guys are in the pockets of the hotel association. So I was like, well, I'm not a believer in conspiracy theories, and frankly, I don't compete with the hotels. When I call and tell my customers that, sorry, you can't come fishing because I've already got a three-day rental that week and I can't rent anymore that week, they're not going to say, okay, we'll come and stay in a hotel. No, they're going to go to another beach community and go fishing there and spend their money there. So I implore you to please make it two. I don't understand what's magical about one. I heard somebody say, the more renters you have, the quality goes, the quality's based on the number of renters. I hope you're smarter enough to know that. The quality of rentals is based on the quality of the landlords and people they rent to. That's what the quality is. And so, so that is a vapid argument that I hope you guys don't fall for, and I'm not even sure why they believe it themselves. So if you go with one, one final plea, think about those like me who've been invested their life savings, made a deal with the city. At least keep us in mind and say, hey, you're already here, we'll work with you. Variance, grandfathered.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Jean Davis. Jean Davis. And then next will be Gail Bucker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening, fellow council. Good evening, staff. Here we are again, short-term rentals. Well, with the recent proposals that the planning commission did, they've got it right for all of Virginia Beach. Let's quit this ongoing, ongoing. The only thing there's not a contingency, excuse me, for, is probably a zombie apocalypse. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Gail Bucker. Gail Bucker. Tom Bucker. Jack Drescher.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, I'm Jack Drescher. I am the past president of and representative of the North Virginia Beach Civic League. And for the benefits of Ms. Wooton, Mr. Nygaard, and Mr. Rouse, I also chaired the ad hoc committee investigating short-term rentals for the city for, gosh, it's been two and a half years now. It's overly, we're all going to bring this to a conclusion. Insofar as, I understand it, the planning commission recommendations have matched the version of the proposed ordinances produced by the city council in most respects. There are a couple of them I'd like to comment on with respect to the North Virginia Beach Civic League. First and foremost, there was a grandfathering date proposed by the city council of July 1st, 2018, so that anyone who is now engaged in short-term rentals at this particular point in time could simply register and pay taxes. We're fine with that date. Insofar as the renewal process of the conditional use permits are concerned, I know the city council version suggested two years. The planning commission suggested five. I will tell you that that was out of deference to Mr. Kemp's department. They felt like if it was five years, there'd be ample enough time to find out if someone was going to be violating the various ordinances. Insofar as the guest log is concerned, we disagree with the planning commission. They have removed that requirement from its version. The city council has included it, but I understand, and yet I have not seen this, that disclosure of that guest log by an operator would be pursuant to search warrant or something very similar, and we are in agreement with that. Lastly, and this appears to be the greatest item of tension, the number of contracts per seven-day consecutive period. The Civic League is in favor of one contract for seven consecutive days. We recognize that there is a natural tension between the use of one's property as one deems appropriate and the residential character of the neighborhood. And so council has to balance that out in one direction or the other. We feel that one contract per seven-day period, 52 per year, is plenty. That gives the owner-operator of a short-term rental the opportunity to have those rentals, and yet it protects the sanctity of a neighborhood. Whichever way you go, we have to say, on behalf of the Civic League, and frankly, me personally, we'd like to see this issue resolved once and for all. Even my opponents in the audience would want that done once and for all. It just needed to happen. So hopefully, you'll reach some conclusion tonight. Thank you.
May I clarify?
Yes, ma'am.
Which grandfather-in-date does the?
We think your date is reasonable. I mean, if an owner-operator cannot go down and register with the commissioner of revenue between January 15 today and July 1, there's something wrong. We just think that that's plenty of time, and they will be exempted from the conditional use permit process. Now, I think that people may not realize that the rest of the ordinances are going to apply to whoever is engaged in short-term rentals, whether you have a conditional use permit or you're grandfathering it. All the other rules and regulations will apply. Thank you. Thank you.
Tammy Hopkins. And then after Ms. Hopkins is Dale Young.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I'm a resident with my husband in Sandbridge, and, you know, we have a really nice home that we enjoy. We're surrounded by rental properties. We love the renters. In fact, I get to know the ones that come to visit because they love to look at my garden and our dog. Just to let you know, I agree with just one rental contract per week and two people in a bedroom. My major concern is safety. I've always been a safety nut, raised, you know, my children. Two per room is the industry standard, and I'm always thinking about the poor family, the, you know, the families that come, what if a fire were to happen? That's extra, if you have eight bedrooms, you're looking at about eight more people you got to get out of, you know, a home. There's no sprinkler systems in some of these large homes. You know, lighted paths. It's just all about safety that I'm worried about. And I'm worried about the trash, you know? You're going to have more trash cans per person. Where you can put the trash cans, they already, you know, the, a lot of the homes in the front are nothing but a parking lot, and some of the homes have issues with the trash cans not being taken in properly, or the people can't ingress or egress out of their property. And then they sometimes will put their six trash cans in front of my home, you know? And it's a problem, and I'm out there picking up trash, you know? It's just, it's a safety issue. Please, you know, when I work all week, I like to sit on my deck and look at the ocean and play with my dog and garden. If you're going to allow, you know, one person extra per bedroom, I've got like eight or nine rental houses around me, you're going to increase. You, just do your math. You know, there's going to be more noise. I like drinking my coffee, listening to the birds. I feed the birds every day. You're going to take away my peace and enjoyment and my husband's and my neighbors. You know, put yourself in our, you know, situation. We are residents. This is our neighborhood. We welcome everyone who has a short-term rental. They have every right to make the money. But just know that we are residents who live there, you know? And I, I like where I live, and I wouldn't live anywhere else. But just keep that in mind. Let's make it one-win for everybody. One a week, that's enough. It's just going to affect the whole city, not just us. And let's just do two. If you could save one life, just think how good you're going to feel. It's an accident waiting to happen. If you don't, unless you get the fire chief out there, inspect these decks, and you have your day-trippers that come. They're allowed to stay till, you know, a certain time, they have to leave. If you're increasing one.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Dale Young. And after Ms. Young is Larry Horvath.
Good evening, city council members, and congratulations on winning your elections to serve Virginia Beach in this capacity. And I want to say, FC's looking good.
Indeed.
This, my name is Dale Young. I'm a 45-year-plus resident of Virginia Beach. Yeah, I'm metal. It's a great democracy that not only allows us open debate, but the election of officers, officials like you to represent the views of the people. We live in a society that citizens can and do hold elected officials accountable for hearing and representing the voting public. You're an example of that. Look at just what happened. I'm one of those voters. I'm a homeowner that lives up near the Chesapeake Bay in an area that's attractive to visitors. For over three years, I've been listening to the pros and cons of the debate over the short-term rentals, and I've learned much during this time. Short-term rentals are not the same as home sharing. Short-term rentals do not have an owner or representative on-site, whereas the home sharing does. We know that. Short-term rentals have improved to disrupt the nature of a neighborhood. While many visitors are nice people, they're still on vacation or on a trip. Behavioral rules change. Noise levels increase with the numbers of folks. Parking and trash issues are amplified, and folks tend to relax rules and overlook ordinances and even police warnings. We've seen that. SDRs are attractive to investors, folks not planning to live in Virginia Beach. Many cities, including New York, Paris, Miami, Barcelona, DC, and others, have come to the reality that though the values of homes initially increase in highly desirable areas, they decrease in the long run as residents are forced to leave their homes, and investors are just there to use the properties for their short-term gain. These are all problems you've discussed, and I'm sure you've discussed them in great detail. I've changed my mind during this time. When I first came in, I was thinking, no way do I want a short-term rental anywhere near me. I'm not against short-term rentals if they're properly regulated. The problem we're having is that your regulations that you decide tonight are going to be city-wide, and they affect all of us, not just a few of us in a few areas, all of us. So your realistics need to be long-ranging, they need to be widely acceptable. These are homes, they're not businesses. We've even heard some people talk about, my business, you're going to ruin my business. This is not a business. These are homes we're talking about, residences. If they're, if short-term rentals are businesses, they should be regulated like businesses. And that's what you should be doing then. I've watched this debate over the issues, and I say, no one's seeing, no one is getting what they want. The compromises you made initially were the ones that we came up with, and we decided we could live with those. The recommendations by the planning commission have diluted these proposals to the detriment of the neighborhoods. Please support your original proposals without the planning commission changes. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry Horvath. And then next will be Donna Watson.
Welcome.
My name is Larry Horvath. I also live in Bay Lake Pines up near the Chesapeake Bay. I'm here with the gracious honor of representing our Bay Lake Pine Civic League and our Board of Directors to tell you, we don't want short-term rentals in our neighborhood. We think that these businesses belong in business districts. If people want to run a short-term rental, they should be trying to do this work in a business, a resort area, not in a residential area. These, we've, I've been here now two years talking and explaining these issues, and I've had a lot of time to think about them, and I, I didn't think I'd still be here two years from now making the same statements, but these businesses have a bad effect on neighborhoods. People live in residential neighborhoods and buy houses and homes to develop familiarity with their neighbors. They want to have neighbors that they know. They don't want people coming in that they don't know. They want to develop long-term relationships, and a short-term rental, a weekend visitor is not the type of person that every weekend a new person is going to help maintain that type of familiarity. I have never heard anybody come up here and say that they would love to have a short-term rental near their house. So that's one voice that we have not heard, and I don't think any of you would want a short-term rental next to your home. I've been in neighborhoods that were once thriving, and now there's, there's a tipping point where you have a certain number of short-term rentals, and people, you don't see children on the streets anymore. Residential neighborhoods were designed to be residential. If you look in Merriam-Webster, it says to permanently occupy or permanently dwell. A weekend visitor does not do that, so this is not compatible. And for that reason, the conditional use permits that you have originally proposed and the, and that the planning commission has endorsed, we think they are very important because this is non-conforming activity business. Hotel businesses do not belong in residential neighborhoods. The conditional use permit gives all the neighbors a forum to voice their opinions. If they feel like they've got too many short-term rentals in their neighborhood, and it's starting to feel hollowed out, they're going to say, we don't want anymore. There's a tipping point that... I have never heard anybody come up here and say that they would love to have a short-term rental near their house. So that's one voice that we have not heard, and I don't think any of you would want a short-term rental next to your home. I've been in neighborhoods that were once thriving, and now there's a tipping point where you have a certain number of short-term rentals, and people, you don't see children on the streets anymore. Residential neighborhoods were designed to be residential. If you look in Merriam-Webster, it says to permanently occupy or permanently dwell. A weekend visitor does not do that. So this is not compatible. And for that reason, the conditional use permits that you have originally proposed and that the Planning Commission has endorsed, we think they are very important because this is non-conforming activity business. Hotel businesses do not belong in residential neighborhoods. The conditional use permit gives all the neighbors a forum to voice their opinions. If they feel like they've got too many short-term rentals in their neighborhood, and it's starting to feel hollowed out, they're going to say, "We don't want any more." There's a tipping point that everybody, I think, can clearly see. So we think that should be maintained. The Planning Commission obviously endorsed that also. We also don't want the Council's original proposal of one per seven-day period, two people per bedroom. We don't want that diluted, and it's only going to disrupt our neighborhoods even further because these ordinances are going to be citywide. So in short, anybody wants to run a hotel business, don't encourage them to do it in a residential neighborhood. Thanks.
Thank you.[641.82][641.82][applause]
Donna Watson. And after Ms. Watson's, Andrew Roper.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of City Council. My name is Donna Watson, and I am here to urge you all to pass the regulations that the previous City Council has drafted. They were based on years of study by the City Council, City staff, and many committees, such as Mr. Drescher described. The regulations are a great compromise and are based on what's legal, what's safe, and what's fair to both the residents and the owners of short-term rentals. Short-term rentals are not currently legal in Virginia Beach. They need to be made legal, and they need to be regulated. Whatever regulations y'all put into effect have to be strong enough to protect our neighborhoods. If you need to loosen the regulations in the future, y'all can do that, but it's almost impossible to go the other way. We want Virginia Beach to have the reputation as being a safe place to live and visit. In the recent presentation to Council regarding developing strategies for our neighborhoods, one of the goals is to, quote, "retain our millennials and help longtime residents age in place successfully." My husband and I have three children who all graduated from Kellum High School and have all graduated from Virginia colleges. None of them are coming back to Virginia Beach. None of their friends from Kellum are coming back to Virginia Beach to work. The reason? There just aren't the jobs here that they want. When high-paying companies look at investing in a community, they look at many factors, including the quality of life and the neighborhoods. We support a maximum occupancy of two people per bedroom plus four. Many laws and agencies say that two people per bedroom is reasonable based on safety standards. City recently imposed stricter occupancy limits here at City Hall. We saw that tonight. Don't you want strict occupancy limits in short-term rentals based on what is safe for the people who vacation here? We support one rental contract in a seven-day period. This is a perfect example of if you give an inch, people will take a mile. Back in 2016, thinking was to only allow seven-day rentals. We heard that investors need to be able to rent for three days in the off-season. A compromise was proposed, one rental in a seven-day period. Many neighborhoods have said that they can live with this compromise. Please do not put the grandfather-in-date sometime in the future. In November 2017, there were more than 1,500 identified short-term rentals. As of last Monday, there are over 2,200 known short-term rentals. The guest log is something that City staff proposed as a means of enforcement and in response to Council's concerns. Please bring this issue to closure so we can end the constant conflict that has plagued our neighborhood and other neighborhoods. I live in Sandbridge. We have watched our neighborhood being torn apart by the Sandbridge business community as this issue is continually being kicked down the road. I strongly urge you to take action tonight and pass the City Council's proposed regulations so that we can end this misery. More neighborhoods won't be torn apart, and we can protect all the neighborhoods of Virginia Beach. It's a really easy way to protect our neighborhoods, and it won't cost a lot of money like SeaWorld would.
Thank you.
Thank you.[836.51][836.51][applause]
Andrew Roper. And then after Mr. Roper will be Nicole Roper.
Good evening, and Happy New Year. I haven't heard that said tonight, so, but congratulations also on your electoral victories if you were running in the past election. So it's good to see some new faces and some returning faces. My name is Andrew Roper. I'm a resident of Virginia Beach, and I'm here tonight to express my support for the Planning Commission's current recommendation on short-term rentals. I would like to also further add that with respect to some of the comments that are made here tonight, I don't disagree with some of the mentions made tonight with respect to safety or occupancy or the need to have a sort of strict occupancy on a particular room. And I would just ask that you consider logic in this particular scenario. Imagine if you were in a room that was 20 by 30. Would two people be too much in that size room? But how many would be too much? Two people in a, say, 6 by 8 room would probably be just adequate. But if a house is built with a relatively large room and has several bunk beds in it, well, then clearly you're going to want to have more than two people in that room. Why else would you have the need for bunk beds? Families all the time will put multiple kids into a large room, especially if it makes sense if they're young in age. So to restrict the occupancy in the rooms would be limiting to families who are mostly the people who are coming to Sandbridge specifically in terms of where they would be able to rent, how many children would be able to go, and whether or not their, you know, cousins or nephews or nieces would be able to attend with them. We don't have College Week down in Sandbridge every week of the summer during the rental season. In fact, families come down to Sandbridge because it is a family community, not because it's Daytona, not because it's Atlantic City. They enjoy the fact that they're in a residential home. They have the action, the opportunity to use their kitchen, go shopping, congregate, meet, get to know some neighbors, enjoy the pool that they might have in the house, so on and so forth. So any restrictions above and beyond what the Planning Commission has recommended, I think, would be burdensome to the homeowners who make this their livelihood and for the businesses who have made considerable investments in these particular areas. Not only that, but then there would be some collateral damage in the economic vitality of Sandbridge as well as the surrounding communities that depend upon this investment activity occurring within Sandbridge. So again, I urge you to please consider Planning Commission's recommendation tonight. That's your vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.[984.63][984.63][applause]
Nicole Roper. Nicole Roper. Thank you. Sarah Houck. And then next will be Michael Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor, not used to saying Dyer, anyway, and City Council. My name is Sarah Houck, and I live in Chesapeake Beach. Been down there since 1952. As a Civic League member, T.J. Morgan, the President, asked if I would be a representative tonight to talk about the Civic League and their short-term rental record. They have, in your records, you have a letter from November 6, 2017, stating that the Civic League unanimously passed a motion to oppose any efforts to allow the establishment of short-term rentals within residential neighborhoods. Last week, President Morgan stated the Civic League's position still stands, so please pass your proposal with no changes. Speaking personally, I had lived, most of y'all know this because I've been up here for three years. I live next door to a short-term rental, and we suffered through that with one rental a week. If you put two in there, you'll just kill us. It's just, we're a small neighborhood, quiet, whatever, and it just totally messes up your whole way of life. It would be very unfair to put the hardship of a second rental per week on any resident. Also, please keep the date that you have registered SDRs to July 1, 2018.
Thank you.[1100.13][1100.13][applause]
Michael Kelly. And after Mr. Kelly is Kathy Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Michael Kelly, and I'm the President of the Pro-TAN Civic League. Like Mr. Drescher, I also sat on the Ad-Hoc Committee a couple of years back. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to at least get in your hands a copy of the letter I delivered on the 10th of January last Friday. Our position there remains the same. Essentially, we did a comparison with the City Council draft regulations of 13 September and also the proposed Planning Commission regulations. And also recently, I had a chance to review the City Manager's Letter dated January 11. So the comments are hopefully in addition to that letter. Pro-TAN really dislikes the idea of grandfathering, and certainly, we do not want to see it moved to the right from the July 31, 2018 date. The idea here is extending it to the right creates a situation where you have, if the Planning Commission proposal is adopted, there'll be several years before you have the opportunity for some of these homes, these SDRs, to be reviewed. So there's one issue there. Also, we would say that the argument has been out long enough, and there's been sufficient notice about SDRs that we don't really think anyone should need more time to look at procedural changes. With respect to the Zone Enforcement inspectors, and this is based upon reading of the City Manager's Letter, there appears to be high concern about having enough. And my quotes, the City Manager's Letter, who only hopes to have them available, and this is paragraph 3A of the letter, "especially during the evening and summer hours." Obviously, enforcement is critical with the decisions you're going to make. So how you might fund that, not sure. Perhaps you can go about recapturing some of the cost of this through a form of a higher application rate or some other use of applicable taxes, but it is important. And the final point here is, the City Manager's Letter proposes requiring a responsible party and contact information updated, quote, "each time the property registers." This is unclear, and if registration is extended to five years, is unacceptable for maintaining currency. Rather, the requirement should specify that these data must be updated each time the data changes, or more practically, certified at least annually with the payment of taxes. Thank you very much.[1316.83][1316.83][applause]
Kathy, excuse me, Kathy Davis. And then after Ms. Davis is Brad Syke.
Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. This is going to be very short and sweet. Thank you for all the time that you've taken with all the committees and listening to us for the past three years. I agree with the recommendations from the Planning Commission and would ask that you approve them tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks.[1348.13][1348.13][applause]
Brad Syke.
Welcome, sir.
And then after that is Pat Barton.
Mr. Mayor, we listen, City Council members, congratulations to the new winners. My name is Brad Syke. I'm President of the Virginia Beach Council of Civic Organizations. As you are aware, the VBCCO is an umbrella organization that supports citizens in all neighborhoods. In the fall of 2018, our membership unanimously voted to support the following motion. As it strives to protect all neighborhoods in Virginia Beach, the Virginia Beach Council of Civic League organization does hereby support the rules and regulations as set forth in section 241.2 of the short-term rental ordinance, to be referred to the Planning Commission by City Council. Furthermore, the VBCCO believes these rules and regulations as set forth in the ordinance shall apply equally to all neighborhoods in the city. This ordinance, now reconsidered by the Planning Commission, returns with three changes that the VBCCO does not support. We do support one rental contract in a seven-day period, occupancy of two individuals per bedroom plus four, and the original grandfathering date of July 1, 2018. Therefore, your Council of Civic League organization, which represents every neighborhood in the city, request your vote and support on the original City Council ordinance. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.[1481.13][1481.13][applause]
Pat Barton. And after Mr. Barton is Nancy Parker.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, y'all. My name is Pat Barton, and I'm here just to say I do support the Planning Commission's recommendations. I think this has been a long struggle for everybody, and I think they've hit the middle ground, and it's a good compromise on both sides. So I do support their recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you.[1514.83][1514.83][applause]
Nancy Parker. Nancy Parker. And then after Ms. Parker's, Anders Hjalstrom.
Welcome, Nancy. How you doing?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the new members of Council. Mayor Dyer, members of City Council, City Manager Hanson, and City Attorney Sales. Some members of the Council and the public have been grappling with the issue of short-term rentals and event houses for almost four years. This issue has been very divisive and created so much unpleasantness. It's time to put the short-term rental and the event houses to bed. My name is Nancy Parker, President of the Resort Beach Civic League, which includes the Old Beach, Pinewood, and Lakewood neighborhoods located on the front steps of the resort tourist area. The Resort Beach Civic League has elected new officers, and I am here to present the position of the board, voted on January 7, 2019, which supports the City Council regulations without the changes proposed by the Planning Commission. Try as you may, Sandbridge is not an entity unto itself, and the decision should not be viewed through the lens of only Sandbridge. There have been, there has been a trend tonight of those that are speaking for Sandbridge that are supportive of the ones from the Planning Commission. But if you listen to the rest of the city, they are in support of the stronger ones that are much more protective, which are the ones that have been endorsed by the earlier Council and sent for support and feedback. You need to listen to the rest of the city. In reality, Sandbridge SDRs and investors represent only a very small fraction of your city. This is a business that is being introduced into other residential neighborhoods, and this business should be governed by regulations that protect and provide the highest level of assurance and tranquility to the adjacent neighbors. The financial return of an investor should not have precedent nor priority over the long-term financial investments of your citizens and their homes. The majority of the STR investors will not live with the daily unintended consequences of these regulations, but we will. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if I might give a shout-out to John Moss. Get well, John.
Yeah, thank you.
Quickly.
He's in our prayer.
Thank you very much.
Anders Hjalstrom. And then Tim Worst.
Hello. I'm Anders Hjalstrom, longtime resident of Virginia Beach. Welcome to the new members and the ones that have been around for quite a while. I've been to almost every one of the Planning Commission meetings, most of the City Council meetings that were, you know, addressing this particular issue. So we've had quite a bit of back and forth. And I think the reason we're still here today is because back in July of last year, you know, the City Council at that time looked at the same issue and went through these same deliberations and said, "Look, Planning Commission, let's come up with a reasonable solution that's more of a middle ground for everyone." And I think what they've done now is they've presented that to the City Council, and that's what I'm here in favor of, and I just thought you should know that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work.[1753.24][1753.24][applause]
Tim Worst. And after Mr. Worst is Kathy Kelly.
Good evening again. So glad I got up here. It's been a long evening. I'm sure you can appreciate it. My phone's about to die and lose my notes. I am up here to ask that you please approve the Planning Commission way that they've got it figured out right now, the way they have it planned. I enjoyed my campaigning in 2018 for 10 or 11 months. Part of the best fun that I had was out in Sandbridge, meeting a ton of folks, some of the parties that they had out there on the beach, which are safe and which are surrounded by our Virginia Beach Police Officers and our Sheriff's Department. I talked to dozens and dozens of residents. The huge majority are in- and dozens of residents. The huge majority are in favor of the way this proposal is being done now. The very few minority do not like it, the way it's being done. They don't want, you know, three people per bedroom. They don't want two rentals per week. But the reasons they don't want that are very minute. And I think if you enforce the laws that are on the books now, it'll take care of themselves. And Sandbridge will continue on to be in a great place to go to the beach. I grew up here. We went to the beach there since I was a kid. My daughter goes there now surfing with her buddies. We go there during the summers. We take our dog there to run. I think you need to trust the majority and not the one percenters that are in there saying that this is an issue. Three people per bedroom. As the gentleman was talking about bunk beds, to this day, I can still put four teenagers in a room with bunk beds. That's how you get them in there. That's how it works. And that's that family fun that you have. Two rentals a week, that's during the wintertime, during some of those off-seasons where you get those folks in there to create that money so that you're able to afford those houses in Sandbridge. And I can't imagine having to list every time, every log of every adult and every kid that is in that room. If this did go downhill for Sandbridge, how would we replace the revenue that it brings in? How would we replace that revenue that goes to the school board? I think if we enforce the laws that are on the book now, and they are safe in Virginia Beach, I know those police officers that are there. I know a lot of those folks with EMS that are down there. It's a great spot. I think we follow the Planning Commission's idea that they have now, and we keep Sandbridge booming. Thank you.
Kathy Kelly. Kathy Kelly.
Well, obviously, I'm not Kathy.
Charlie Kelly.
I am Charlie. My wife's got chicken. She was going to support the Planning Commission, but she's going to stand up. So, I respect that.
Welcome.
Charlie.
Thank you. Nice to see you and looking to the new year and new council. And David, Sabrina, Aaron, welcome. Big ticket that you're talking about here tonight. And I support the short-term, the Planning Commission's short-term recommendations. And I thought tonight was your decision to either accept their recommendations or reject their recommendations. Upon arrival, someone showed me a 40-page booklet with a bunch of new stuff that you're going to vote on. I haven't seen that. So, any transparency, I don't know if that's the case. But if it is, if there's some new proposal, and it hasn't been shared with the community at large, I have a problem with that. If you do not accept the Planning Commission's recommendation and come up with some other strategy, I urge you to have an economic impact study formed before you vote. Because we are talking about millions of dollars at stake. And this is, this, many people who have come, you know, run for office, have come to the Sandbridge Civic League and said, "We understand that Sandbridge is different." And I respect the communities that just say, "Sandbridge is different." We can't have the same rules. This community's been doing this for 50 years. And to turn it around and say to people who used to allow three people per bedroom, and say, "Oh, you can't anymore. You have to cut your occupancy by a third," that's just not fair. I don't think that's, if you were running a restaurant, and all of a sudden they said, "Oh, you can't sell steak anymore." You know, red meat is bad for you. I don't think that's the way you do it. I think you can educate people. You can do things. You can, and I'm all for safety. But think it through. It's a big decision. The Planning Commission has spent hours and hours and hours and listened to public input, and they've come up with their recommendations. And I think it's time we just accept, we ask these people to help us, to give us guidance. Every time they recommend something to us, we turn around and say, "Oh, no, no. We know better. We're not going to accept you." Why have a Planning Commission then? Anyway, that's my two cents. See you.
Thank you very much.
Mark Bizet. Mark Bizet. Diana Howard. And after Ms. Howard's, Tim Solonik. Solonik, sorry. Thank you.
Good evening again. Every time we think about tourism, everybody always thinks about the oceanfront. We do everything for the oceanfront. We provide entertainment for them on Fifth Street, Seventh Street, 31st Street, Neptune Park. We have beach events all over the place. We constantly want to put venues and everything. But Sandbridge is our big tourism destination as well. And people come here for the beach. We don't provide anything for Sandbridge, but they provide so much for us. They give us $5.5 million in hotel tax, $5.7 million in transit occupancy tax, $12.6 million in real estate taxes, $163,000 in restaurant taxes, $5 million for the schools. We take $8 million in excess money for the general fund, and we just try to stifle them to death with all these regulations. Please approve the Planning Commission's recommendations.
Jim Solonik. And then Mike Meg.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Mr. Stiles, Mr. Hanson, congratulations to all the winners. I'm extremely stressed right now because depending on how you vote tonight, my wife and I might lose our jobs. The random arbitrary one rental per seven-day period will not affect noise in any way, as most people who rent big houses rent for the week. My wife and I operate a small mom-and-pop one-bedroom that we live right next to. Three guests that we've had that might never appear here. We had a guest who sold a company to the company that designed this, to the man who designed this, in our cottage, looking for real estate. And he chose our cottage because he wanted to see the North End, the Bayside area, and he had to fly to a meeting in Manhattan, and he could get there quickly from here. We've had a deputy central banker writing a book about a president stay with us. We've had roughly 15 to 16 people move to Hampton Roads, including about eight to 10, who have bought real estate. The one-in-seven rental will do nothing with noise and shut down all one- and probably two-bedroom cottages.
Thank you much.
Mike Meg. And then Lee Gage.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
I was a council. I manage some and own some short-term rentals along the Shore Drive, Ocean Park, Chick's Beach, Cape Story by the Sea area. That is all zoned R5R and R5D in those areas, which stands for resort. And in the code, it says that they're both single-family and seasonal rentals. That is the fiber of those neighborhoods. We talk about disrupting the neighborhoods, but many of those neighborhoods in that area have been renting properties since the 50s and before that. The one that I bought in Cape Story by the Sea has been rented since the early 50s by many families that keep coming back time and time again. They do, we have one bedroom that has a bunk bed, a single bed, and then another one has a double bed in it. So, by limiting it to two people per, you know, two people per night or two rooms, doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me. The same thing with one contract per seven days. The average, you talk to almost any, you know, the economic development, the hotels, it's three nights is a common, average stay for a vacation. So, again, by limiting it one per seven days is a huge financial impact, and I don't see where it changes the fiber of the, you know, the rental. It's people are coming and going, whether they're here for three days or seven days. People are still coming and going, and I don't see the big impact or the negative impact of having more than, or two rentals in a seven-day period. So, I strongly suggest and urge that you approve the Planning Commission's recommendations as a good compromise. And I think a lot of that stuff will work out as long as we inform or enforce the rules that are on the books tonight. All righty. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Lee Goss. Lee Goss. And then Douglas Houston.
Welcome, sir.
How are you all doing?
Doing great.
I live in Sandbridge, in the Sandbridge Dunes condominium. I also own an oceanfront rental in Sandbridge that I rent out. And I enjoy renting it out because it allows people from all over to enjoy the oceanfront. These proposed regulations, therefore, affect me doubly. I live in Sandbridge, so quality of life for people who live there. I rent a house out, and your proposed regulations are particularly limitations on people in a room, are cutting into my ability to run my oceanfront rental. I support the Planning Commission recommendations because they're transparently arrived at, and they are the best compromise. I oppose any alternative proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Douglas Houston. Douglas Houston. Patrick Keenan.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, thank you for hearing us tonight. I am the President of Sebert Realty in Sandbridge. My family, my mother, Jeanne Sebert, is in the audience here. We have been renting houses in Sandbridge for as long as houses have been rented in Sandbridge. We have been paying the lodging tax to the City of Virginia Beach for as long as it has been assessed by the City of Virginia Beach. 2018, we welcomed, just between the months of May and September, nearly 76,000 guests to our rental homes. Those folks spent money in the restaurants. They spent money in the retail shops in the Red Mill area, probably up at the oceanfront as well. Sandbridge is an economic driver for the City of Virginia Beach. And it's kind of silly that you would consider that Sandbridge is like everything else in Virginia Beach and should be regulated like everything else in Virginia Beach. I support regulation. I'm 100% okay with toeing the line for whatever it is that we as, or you rather, as representatives of the city come up with. However, I just strongly caution that you think carefully about what you're going to do. The idea that you can make the rule less strict in the future, as it was suggested tonight, in order to fix it, is not a fix. The damage is done by that. Property values disappear. Guests go elsewhere. It's imperative to my family. It's imperative to the property owners 300 that I represent in Sandbridge. It's imperative that you think carefully and pass the rules or the regulation that was suggested by the Planning Commission. It is something we can live with down there. We will be the champions that we have always been for the City of Virginia Beach. We have promoted the city as a destination. I do that out of my dime, right? I don't ask the city to help me promote my business. I promote the city. And I'm going to continue doing that because it still will be to my benefit. But I just strongly urge you to think carefully before you march forward and pass a regulation that would be particularly damaging to Sandbridge in particular. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That was all the speakers, sir.
Okay, thanks. Does anybody else want to speak on this? Okay, Conrad. Amanda, do you need him to sign up first?
Um, he can just state his name from there.
Okay, you know, state your name and address, phone number.
Conrad Shesvener, 1367 Halford Road, and 757-719-2113 is the phone number. I work in the oceanfront at the now Ocean Holiday on 24th Street. We have rooms that we could rent out to at most five individuals on a night, and people can stay for months at a time. So, I don't necessarily see why you would arbitrarily want to hold that back from our Virginia Beach citizens as well. So, I would request of the city to make it easier for our Virginia Beach brothers and sisters to make money through their own houses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to put a motion on the table?
Pardon? You're going to make a motion? You're going to put a motion on the table?
I'd like to move that we adopt the...
Oh, wait a minute. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Holmes Clark. My wife and I, Kim, bought our house in Shadow Lawn in 2001. We have a detached garage apartment that is grandfathered. And we used to use it as an office. Starting last year, we started doing Airbnb. It's been very successful. We've had nothing but families. In fact, I just had a family, actually, it was a doctor that was here for a reserve shift at Oceana, and her parents stayed with her baby there. We've never had any partiers. We've never had a problem with parking. We've never had a problem with noise. We've never had any complaints from our neighbors. You know, last summer, we probably had, in the peak of the season, we were having winter rentals. But then, as the season winds down, it's imperative that we be able to have, you know, two or three-day rentals. It's what makes our business model, it is a business successful. So, you know, I saw something on there about, I don't know, detached property or whatever. But in essence, you need to look at that. That really is a home-sharing thing. It's not like I have separate structures all over my property that I'm renting. So, that needs to be looked at. The, I believe that you should follow the Planning Commission's idea and allow, you know, short-term rentals. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Nygar.
Well, I have been kind of antsy. I just, anyway, I'd like to go ahead and bring forth the Planning Commission proposal as a motion to adopt, and I would entertain friendly amendments.
I want a second. I would like to give you a friendly amendment.
Thank you.
One thing is, last fall, the council passed a resolution to not have any of this go into effect until November 1st, 2019. Correct, Mark?
Yes. On October 16 of 2018, you passed a resolution stating that any ordinance adopted by City Council in regard to home-sharing and short-term rentals shall not be effective until the later of November 1, 2019, or six months after the date of adoption of such ordinances. So, if you adopted them tonight and you held to the resolution that you passed last October, your effective date would be November 1, 2019.
So, I'd like to include that. And then also...
I accept that.
If, in case we want to do, anybody wants to do an overlay for their neighborhoods or whatever, that we start a process for, planning a process on how we do that. So, would you accept that?
Yeah, we'd like to attach an amendment to include a process to allow neighborhoods that have objected to the proposal, that they could go through a procedure, is that what you're saying? Procedure to...
Process so that if they want to have an overlay district.
To have an overlay district to opt out of, no.
Well...
Opt in.
Am I, to opt in.
Whatever, to have a rules meet their needs.
To form rules that would meet their needs in the neighborhood?
Yeah.
Is that your proposal? I don't have objections to the amendment.
Mr. Wood.
Nothing's wrong.
I'm sorry. Is that feasible? Did you want to fix that?
You had previously discussed a City Council policy which would identify when you would, the process for initiating consideration of a short-term overlay district. You could pass that at any time. It doesn't require inclusion with this. But I will say this, an overlay district that, if you pass the Planning Commission ordinance tonight, an overlay district that was, that provided more stringent regulation could prove problematic from an enforcement perspective. So, I just want to be, an overlay that is, that is less restrictive... So I just want to be, an overlay that is, that provide, that is less restrictive would not present any problem. But I do have concern that there might be enforcement problems with an overlay that provided more restrictive regulations if it were enacted after you enact this tonight.
It still wouldn't hurt to have a process in case we want to do it.
No, 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 ma'am. And I have drafted the policy that you all asked before, asked for before, and I can pass it around if you want to consider it.
Well, I don't want it to vote on that.
Okay, okay.
So what are we voting on? The Planning Commission's recommendations plus what?
A, the motion that you, the...
Friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment to...
November 1st.
November 1st.
And?
That's it.
That was it?
So the, but I think for matter of record, we want to have a process by which neighborhoods that do not want to have three, two rentals per week have the ability to...
I think the overlay district was to allow people to not have a conditional use permit.
Yeah, we'll just leave that part out.
We'll leave that part out, okay?
Okay.
So for my clarification, we want to, we're not putting any of this into effect till November 1st of this year? Is that what the, is that what we are proposing currently?
Yes.
Is to vote for the Planning Commission's amendment plus effective date of 11/1/19?
Which we voted on.
Right, no, I under, I just want to make sure I understand because that was a little, the dialogue was a little bit confusing.
I'm sorry, yes.
Anybody else? Barbara?
Yes, I do. Well, I think we need to clarify several things. I thought the overlay district would be if a neighborhood wanted to have an overlay district, like Sandbridge was granted by the General Assembly, they are already in an overlay district, that would not require a conditional use permit.
Correct.
That's what the overlay district would be. Nobody would be able to have different regulations, because I think you had already advised us that that would not be legal.
If you, an overlay district can be created that would obviate the need for a CUP requirement. I have been asked and have stated around the conference room table in there before that if you made specific findings as to how one neighborhood differed from another, it would be possible to have differing regulations. I would discourage that as much as possible based on the uniformity principle, but it can be done. But the concern I have is if you generally allow a use with certain regulations, it may be difficult to make those regulations more restrictive through an overlay. You may be able to make them less restrictive in an overlay, but making them more restrictive through an overlay could be problematic.
Well, I think the uniformity thing was something that, you know, we had come to recognize, that the regulations would apply uniformly to everyone. But that's the unfortunate thing. This has been made to sound as if it only applies to Sandbridge, and we only do this for Sandbridge. Every week, we get an update on the STRs that are registered in the city. This is the update as of last week, and when you look at this, this is the entire city. And we have them everywhere, all over the city. 32 in Centerville, 46 in Kempstall, 41 in Rose Hall, 90 in Bayside, 344 in Lynn Haven, 587 in Beach, 1,066 in Princess Anne. So don't think that you're only doing this for Sandbridge. And this is going to apply to every neighborhood in the city. Every residential neighborhood in the city would be able to, tomorrow, any residential dwelling in the city could become a short-term rental. And I just don't think that is the right thing for our citizens in residential neighborhoods if we're going to be trying to protect the character of our neighborhoods. And I certainly don't think that they should be quite as liberal as the Planning Commission has recommended, especially grandfathering to the effective date of this ordinance, which means we're grandfathering uses that are not there now. How can we grandfather something that's not there now? We're going to be allowing people to just go down and register, and whether they are or not, they would be then grandfathered. So that's one of the recommendations from the Planning Commission, I believe, is that the grandfathering be the effective date of the ordinance. And I just don't see how that could even possibly work. But to say that every house in this city, every apartment in this city, tomorrow could be a short-term rental with two rentals per week, that's 104 per year, and three people per bedroom in every three-bedroom house, that is just much, much too broad. I don't know of any other locality that has done that. I thought the City Council had spent many weeks last summer going through every part of this ordinance, and had come up with an ordinance that is a compromise, and I'm going to stick with that.
Nice, Mark, a question, so...
Rosemary.
So the grandfathering, Mr. Stiles?
Yes, ma'am.
Would the grandfathering be when we pass the ordinance or November 1st?
I was trying to find the specific language that was included in here. My interpretation had been that it was the date of adoption of the ordinance, not the effective date of the ordinance. So as I understand it, the grandfathering date, based on the PC version, would be tonight if you adopt the ordinance, even though you would not, the ordinance would not become effective until November 1. But again, that's subject to, I mean, council can determine that. That's within your purview to clarify if you have a different understanding or desire.
I think it's hard to grandfather into the future.
I got a question.
Are you amending your amendment?
No, no, because he says it stands.
So it'd stand as of today?
Yeah.
Would the ordinance would be passed today? The registration would be today? Is that the plan? Okay.
Aaron. We're voting on the Planning Commission's recommendations right now?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
That will go into effect on November 1st.
That's the only amendment.
That is correct.
Yeah, but the date would be, is it the date of registration as of today? Was that what, Mr. Stiles?
The grandfathering is as of today.
As of today, okay.
No.
Well, actually, as it's written, it says, prior to the effective date of this ordinance, that's in line 205 and 206, the effective date of this ordinance pursuant to the motion would be November 1. If you wanted, if you wanted something else, you would need to change that language from, to the effective date of the ordinance, to a date cer, to today as a date certain.
Well, I think the reason we voted on that last fall was because we thought it would change their season, but if we go with the Planning Commission, it's probably not going to really affect their season.
Well, you are, I mean, I think there is a difficulty grandfathering into the future. I think the reason that you all had discussed a grandfather date was so that you didn't encourage people to go out and...
So let's just remove the, remove the, make it effective November 1st because it's not going to change their season.
Just stay on plan and call it a day.
Okay, so I'm...
What's the amendment?
Yeah, one at a time.
Yeah.
Please be recognized.
Why are we, obviously, with respect to past council members and present councilmen, you worked on this for three years. We send it to the Planning Commission. It's a compromise. Everybody's not going to get what they want, but hey, we, this is the best we have. And we continue, we continue to tweak it till the cows come home. But this is something, I mean, we have it on the table, we've heard from our constituents here. We need to move forward. Let's make decisions. This is why we're here. Let's make, let's make a decision. I mean, that's tough.
Yes, I have something. The grandfathering date that we had in the ordinance that we sent to the Planning Commission was July 1st, wasn't it?
Of 2018, sir. Yes, sir.
Of 2018.
Yes, sir.
Not, not the date of effectiveness of the ordinance.
That is correct, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, that was my suggestion because it was the beginning of our fiscal year, and it just made the most sense to me to start something with the fiscal year, and that's what I had suggested nine months ago, I guess it was.
The date on the Planning Commission's plan was what?
The Planning Commission's language is found at, beginning on line 204 of the ordinance, it says, "Any short-term rental that is registered and paid transient occupancy taxes to the Commissioner of the Revenue prior to the effective date of this ordinance." Now, in fairness to the Planning Commission, I'm not sure whether they were contemplating that you were going to delay the effective date of the ordinance until November, even though you had passed a resolution to that effect. So I don't know whether that was their intent or not, but the language is, "To the effective date of this ordinance," and you've just, in your motion, said the effective date of the ordinance, consistent with your prior resolution, would be November 1. You can amend this language to either put in the prior date, or to put in today's date, or some other date, if you as a body see fit.
Well, we could still make grandfathering as of today.
Yes, ma'am, you could.
Or we could modify the, the motion and take the earlier date, if somebody wants to amend that, that's fine.
Mr. Wood?
Well, I thought Louis was still recognized.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm trying to come up with a compromise here, okay? Is what I'm trying to do. And, you know, I believe leaving the July 1st date is the right date to have. And the reason for that is, is that everybody was put on notice at that time that there was going to be a time for, a time in which they could not, you know, wait and do it later on, in other words. We gave them until July 1st to register, and if they didn't register, then it's their problem. And so I understand the, where the Planning Commission comes from. I like the fact that the Planning Commission put in conditional use permits in it. So that satisfies one of my concerns. The, I believe that if we leave it at July 1st, 2018, as the grandfathering timeframe, and I have a couple other changes that I was considering too, but, and that is, is where it says in item 12, "The owner operating must maintain a guest log, including the name and address and telephone number of all overnight lodgers. The guest log shall be made available to the city only upon issuance of a judicial warrant based upon probable cause that a violation of this section has occurred." In other words, they don't have to have it out there, laying out there all the time, but if there is a violation, then the enforcement people would have the opportunity to have the right to come in and see the guest log.
Once they have a warrant.
Once they have a warrant.
Wouldn't they already have that? I mean, I imagine just about everybody who's running any kind of home rental is using a credit card. They're not taking cash, most likely. So, I mean, if a police officer needs, has gone and gotten a warrant to obtain that information, the homeowner is going to have a credit card information from their book. I mean, I...
No, I think this is a protection of the person doing the renting, in other words.
No, I understand that, I think, but I don't know that we need to put in a rule for them to protect themselves when a good business person is going to keep records.
Well, that's a matter of interpretation and opinion, I guess. My opinion is that if we limit the ability of the enforcement people to come in only when there's a complaint, then we keep the people who are doing the renting from being pastored by nebulous complaints, and enforcement people can make a decision as to whether or not they want to go in and look at the log or not. But that's just my opinion. And so I, I think I can go along with the Planning Commission if they, if we put the grandfather date at July the fir, back to July 1. And I'm not happy about three per room, and, but I think there's a misinterpretation by some of the people who have spoken, quite frankly, about what that really means, what the two per bedroom plus four, or the three per bedroom. For instance, let me give you an example. I have a beach house in Duck, and my interpretation, and it has five bedrooms, and if my interpretation would have been with 2.4, that I had 10, two, five times two is 10 plus four people that I could rent that house to, that were 14 people, not that only two people could sleep in one, in a single bedroom. And I believe that's the way it was, that's the way I interpreted it at least. And if it's three per bedroom, it would be 15 people, and that would be it. So you're talking about 14 versus 15, and which is kind of inconsequential, to be honest with you. But, so, I don't think the enforcement people are going to come in and say, "Well, you can't have the two people in that bedroom. Where are you going to put the other four?" And so I just think, if you're talking about two, two per bedroom plus four, that's 14 people. If you're talking about three per bedroom, that's 15 people. And that's not much difference, to be honest with you.
Well, my option was to just go with the Planning Commission recommendation. That's why I made that motion. I would accept the...
Ma'am, I haven't finished.
He's not finished yet. David, hold, hold, you got recognized, okay?
Okay. So, did you make a motion?
Yeah, we've made several.
Okay, I'm going to make a substitute motion. And my substitute motion is to, to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation with the change that the grandfather goes back to July 1st, 2018.
With November implementation?
Big pardon.
With the November implementation?
Yes.
Okay. I'll second that.
That may be a friendly amendment. I think that's a friendly amendment. I would take that as a friendly amendment.
Would that be a friendly amendment, though? Or a substitute?
It's a friendly amendment.
Oh, yeah, and the log changed. I'd like to make the log change.
I'd accept both of those as a friendly amendment.
So that, just so that I may understand for clarity of the record, the log would now be required, but would be recover, but would be obtainable by the city only upon issuance of a warrant with probable cause?
Right. And the July date, on the grandfather.
And the November date on that.
And the November date.
Yep.
That's my motion.
Okay, Mr. Wood, do you comment?
All right, well, I was just trying to get some clarity here, but it sounds like then, then what we have is, are we doing this as a substitute motion or as a friendly amendment?
I think it's a friendly amendment.
It's a substitute motion, because he's already made a motion.
Okay.
He just said it's a friendly amendment, his motion.
Friendly amendment.
Okay, so, so, Mark, if I could clarify this, it would be Planning Commission recommendations, it would be with, with going back to July 1st, 2018.
Grandfathering.
Grandfathering.
And then the logbook, and then November 1st implementation.
Yes.
Okay, so that's where we are.
I, that's what I understand. So if you're looking at the text of what is in the agenda, the printed agenda, you would be, you would be reinserting the language in number 12, the first sentence, but with a revised second sentence that said that the log would be obtainable by city personnel only upon issuance of a warrant based on probable cause. That would be, number 12 would go back in, and then 13 would revert to the language as previously submitted, which would say the grandfathering date was July 1, 2018. And then you would also be agreeing or stating that the effective date of the ordinance would be November 1 of 2019.
Okay. If I can, Mr. Mayor, to continue, I would, I would say what Jessica had mentioned also, people keeping the records. I feel certain they do keep the records, and I don't think the log is an undue burden because they're going to keep records of who's renting the property, and how many people, and where they're from, and their address, and everything like that. And I just think it's, I think it not only protects, you know, the owner, but I think it also protects the tenants, and I think it's, records are a good thing. The fact that it cannot be accessed without probable cause and a warrant is also a very good thing. I'm happy, or I'm reasonably happy that we're, it looks like we're actually going to get to a resolution on this because it's been going on for... going to get to a, a resolution on this, because this has been going on for, for a number of years.
Yep.
As Aaron, Aaron kind of boiled it down to saying that, and, and you, you got, you knew folks have been thrown into this without the benefit. I mean, the, the bad news is you haven't sat through three years of this, and the good news is you haven't sat through, through three years of this.
Shannon.
Not to belabor this, but how laborious are, is the log? What, what is required of, what data and information do they have to keep on this log? If it's just, you know, the Jones family from New Jersey with credit card, 1, 2, 3, 4 is one thing, but if they have to keep a log of John and Suzie and Fred and Sally and their 2, 4, 6, and 8, and, I mean, what, what criteria?
The language, the language says, "The owner or operator must maintain a guest log, including the name, address, and telephone number of all overnight lodgers."
So, if I have four kids that are under the, under 18, do I have to have all their names and ages, too, or?
You don't have to have ages. You just have to have the name, address, and telephone number of all overnight lodgers. So presumably, you would say, Ms. John Smith, Mary Smith, and kids Kobe, Cory, and...
Because when I stay in a hotel, I just say, my husband and I, I don't tell them my son's name. I, I don't, that, that just seems a little laborious to me.
The, the purpose for that initially being included, I believe, was to, to assist with determining, uh, situations where the occupancy was being abused.
Yeah. Could go back to the event.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. Okay, Jess.
Back on the guest log, I, I mean, I'm deducing Shannon's point here, but we don't, we don't require a hotel to do the same, or, I mean, we get told, "Short-term rentals are not hotels, short-term rentals are like hotels. Oh, we want the short-term rentals to follow the same rules and regulations of hotels." And then we sit up here, and we're having conversation about how different they are, and how they get different. I, I, the, the log is, is, is not a deal breaker for me, but I, I just think it, it is, it... How long are we going to ask people to keep this? Is there, is there a, is there a date certain that they have to have it for three years, five years, 10 years, till they stop doing short-term rentals?
That is not specified in the ordinance.
And so, then somebody comes, and they, they, there's a warrant served, and they provide what they've got, and it's not an accurate, what happens to the homeowner for failing to keep that, that accurate log? We, it just, it's, it's just one more thing that we do not have the ability to enforce. We do not have the ability.
So, Mr. Lewis, would you amend your motion to take out the guest log? I think you'd probably get...
No, I won't.
You won't?
Okay. I think, I thought we agreed that friendly amendment.
Sure. Point of order, point of order, I think we can vote on the amendment separate. I think we can vote on that. Is that...
No.
No?
I'm going to make a substitute motion if you do.
Oh, my God.
Welcome to Jess.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion?
I, I have a question. So, Mark, you, City Attorney, you said, um, so if we pass this tonight without the guest log, if we make another substitute motion to Louis's motion without the guest log, or just to follow the Planning Commission's advice, and that were to pass, and we found there were problems down the road, could, did we then come back later and institute, you have to have a guest log, if we see the need to do that? Is that, is that a further restriction that we could then place later, or no?
I believe if you had a factual basis as, as to why you had to add that back in, that that would be a, a kind of regulation that, that you could sustain.
Okay. Good.
So, since I seconded the motion, I need to know exactly what the motion, what the friendly amendments are.
Uh, so, at this point, the friendly amendments were, unless, unless we want to withdraw it, or we want a substitute motion without it. Is that correct?
That's right.
You want, you want to withdraw the amendment?
No.
Okay. I, I guess we need to entertain a substitute motion that would be the Planning Commission with the July, uh, 1st.
He does a substitute.
Okay, so it's, it's a substitute of the substitute, right?
Does, does he have a second to his substitute?
Well, restate your substitute, please.
Can I do a third sentence?
Substitute motion would be to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation with the following changes, and that is that the grandfathering date would be July the 1st, 2018, that the log would be kept, as, as I had described, uh, earlier, and that, uh, and that's it. And the, and the November 219 date.
But as Mark just said to us, as he told Jessica, there's no time specified, how long they have to keep the log. So, I could check into your house, say, "I'm here with my 10 relatives." The next day, you could rip that up and throw it...
What kind of time do you want?
Well, I don't want it at all, but I...
So, why are we, why are we...
Well, we have to agree, we have to now vote on Louis's motion, which is on the table, so we have to vote whether we accept it or not accept it, and if we don't accept it, then what?
If we don't accept, we can, we go to the original motion.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so, just to track this procedurally, Mr. Nygaard has withdrawn his agreement to the, to Mr. Jones' amendment, and so now he's making a substitute motion that has an element that Mr. Nygaard's motion did not have. And if he has a second for his substitute motion, that motion would be considered first. If it passes, that would be the ordinance you would then consider. If it does not pass, then you would go back to the original motion.
Okay. Do we have a second on this? Okay. Any other discussion?
So, we're voting on my substitute motion.
With the log.
With the log.
With the log. So, this is with the log. Okay.
Okay. By a vote of four to six, that motion has been defeated.
So, then now it's the same thing without the log.
So, the, the, so then I guess my motion's on the table. I will accept the July 1st date that we have discussed, without the log, and if there's no other discussion on that...
And November...
November implementation with the July 1st.
Grandfather.
Grandfather.
Okay.
I would accept that as a friendly.
The second.
Do we have a second?
I have a question.
Okay.
We, we have at our desk this weekly STR report, and it was updated as of January 7th, and it says there's a total of 2,206 STRs in the city. I'd like to know how many of those people have registered since the July 1st date to today's date. Is that information available? Anybody?
The Commissioner's got it.
Nobody?
Yep, Mr. Matt, Mr. Hanson.
I believe the Commissioner could give us that answer. He, he's been tracking that pretty carefully and has, has the dates of registration.
The, the reason I ask is because I think, as all of this has been widely talked about, there are people that may be under the impression that we were going to give people to November, November 1st. I, I, I would, I would rather see that date be January 1 of this year versus July 1 of last year. But if there's consensus on, on Mr. Nygaard's position, that's just my preference.
I, I accepted it because I feel like there's consensus.
But Jessica has a point. What if people have registered since July 1, and they think they're covered, and what are we going to go to them now and say, "Sorry, you, you did, you did it under the, under the guise that you thought you were"?
Okay, Mr. Wood?
That's, that's the purpose, part of the purpose of the November implementation, because frankly, it'll kickstart the overlay process for, for some neighborhoods, I think, and then also give people time to do CUPs and still have their businesses ongoing until, until then. So, I mean, I'd, I'd, I'd call for the question.
At this point, you know, let's call for the question and, you know, come to a resolution on it. Vote is open.
Miss Blutton, thank you. By eight, by a vote of eight to two, you have passed the resolution as stated from the dais.
Okay, and thank you all for your input. This was a tough one, but thank you all for coming forward. Appreciate that.
I will figure it out tomorrow.
Okay, Mr. Vice Mayor, do we have appointments?
One second here. Let me find them.
Yep.
All right. We got it done. We're not done. We have one more.
Appointment.
Appointment's okay. Tell me when you're ready, sir.
Okay, we're just...
I mean, I can just go ahead and do it now.
Okay. All right, we're going to go ahead with appointments.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I move that we appoint the people to the following boards. And Commission, to the Advertising Advisory Committee, David Nygaard and Glenn Tuckman. To the Audit Committee, David Nygaard. To the Broadband Steering Committee, David Hanson and Rosemary Wilson. To the Community Organization Grant and Allocation Committee, Rosemary Wilson, Andrea Nissman, Dr. Demetria Lindsay. To the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, David Nygaard and Sabrina Wooton. To the Health Services Advisory Board, Dr. Demetria Lindsay. To the Historic Review Board, James Vishon. Human Rights Commission, Allison White. Minority Business Council, Clarence Neely. To the Transition Area Interfacility Traffic Area Citizens Advisory Committee, Joseph Strange and Steve Barnes. To the Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation, Michael Berlucci. And to the Virginia Beach Development Authority, Bill Brunkey. And the following council liaisons, to the Arts and Humanities Commission, Jessica Abbott and Sabrina Wooton. To MEDAC, James L. Wood and Shannon Kane. To Old Beach Design Review Board, David Nygaard. To Parks and Recreation Commission, Sabrina Wooton. To the Resort Advisory Commission, Rosemary Wilson and David Nygaard. To the Virginia Beach Towing Advisory Board, David Nygaard. To the Minority Business Council, Erin Rouse. To the Planning Council, Sabrina Wooton. To the Virginia Aquarium, Shannon Kane.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
There was it.
That's it, second?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we have a speaker for appointments. Barbara Messner.
Now, I've requested several times that we have the list of names on the agenda, on the printed agenda. They have to wait until 10 o'clock at night to get the names, and you rush through them when everybody's making noise, you know? That's violating their, their due process, and, I mean, there's a conflict when you all appoint yourselves. I mean, David Nygaard, there's still challenges with his election. You appointed him to I don't know how many things, Rosemary Wilson, um, you know, I just, I don't even know, I just stayed because I signed up for this, and I wanted to get the list of names. Is there any reason, Mr. Dyer, since you've talked about, you know, letting us be involved in the process? I was here the last time. There were 26 appointments. You only voted on four. I had to come back today, and you just rattled them off. I've requested that we have, you know, y'all, I assume you did it in a closed session. Why can't? We have a list of the names, so we have a chance to look them up and see, um, who they are. I mean, we're left out of the process, and you keep talking about the process. We don't get a chance with the rebuttals, but the developers get 10 minutes plus rebuttals. I mean, the Clear Creek Holdings, that, that's the name that was there, that was a different name today. The Five Acre Wooded Property is going to be taken away, um, I don't know. And I totally disagree with commercializing everyone's neighborhood for, for greed. People are, go to, went to Sand Bridge, and they used to go to Shore Drive, hid away from the traffic, the crime, and the fact that there's no parking.